Today, March 22nd morning session of the Portland City Council. The year, of course, is 2023. Christina, welcome. Please call the roll.
Good morning. Rubio? Here. Ryan?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Maps?
Here.
Wheeler?
I wish I could sound that enthusiastic. That was like, here! Ready to go. Ready to go. And now we'll hear from legal counsel and the rules of order and decorum, which we've probably already violated at this point.
Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct, such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations, will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you. And colleagues, we have people coming and going today, so I'm going to try and manage the quorum rules as best as I can by shifting the agenda a little bit. So today, we'll do communications first, as we always do. We'll quickly dispose of the consent agenda. We'll go back to the time certens. Then I'd like to do the four fifths agenda item following that. And immediately after that, I'd like to do the second reading of the land use appeal, if there are no objections. I think that'll help us manage the quorum for this morning. With that, we'll hear from communications first. First item is item number 225, please.
Request of Brady Howard to address council regarding permit request to take away parking.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Can I start?
You may. Absolutely. If you could just tell us your name for the record, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Brady Howard.
Thank you.
I'm a resident physician at Providence, Portland. I work 70, 80 hours a week, and unless it's the one day a week I get off, I'm out the door by 4:30. My household is made up by other residents and a PhD student. We live between, on Southwest Broadway, between Ninth and Hoffman. Recently, a construction company posted a permit that takes away parking for the next two months for all hours of all days. And we'll tow anybody that parks here. There's no alternative parking nearby. If it was quite possible to take public transit and get to the hospital by the time that I need to, I most certainly would. And it's very difficult to get home from a 15-hour shift and not have anywhere to put your car. It's been a continuous source of anxiety for my household. We're actually considering the possibility that we might have to move. Our landlord's going to be out of income. My ask is not that you revoke the permit. I definitely understand that progress needs to be made, and the apartment complex across the street does need to be worked on. I would like the council to consider reducing it to Monday to Friday in business hours. I really rushed through that. I'm so sorry. I typed up this whole thing.
Is that the end of your testimony? Great. Mr. Howard, thank you for coming in to testify today, especially coming in to testify in person. My name's Mangus. I'm the guy in charge of P-BOT, so the buck on this issue stops with me. Number one, thank you for your service to our community. I'll tell you the truth, this is the first I'm hearing about this particular issue. It sounds complex and unfortunate. What I will do is ask my staff to look into it and to contact you to discuss whatever options that we might, that might be available.
I think that Rod is the person that approved the actual permit. I've been emailing with him.
Okay. I will, if you, I will check in with Rod. I also have staff people in my own city council office who help me manage the P-BOT space. So I will have Shannon connect with Rod, and if we can get your, if you could leave your, some contact information, email or phone number with the clerk, we'll, we will get back to you before the end of the week.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to say something, too. Thank you. This is a really hard time to be in the provision of health care. The hours you work, the time you get up, the number of days in a row you work, that's not lost on anybody. I really appreciate you. Thank you. And I know a lot of people in this room feel the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual, please. Item 226.
Mayor, items 226 and 227 asked to speak together. May I read both items?
Yeah, that's good. They can have six minutes collectively.
226, request of Kathleen Ulrich to address council regarding request to terminate pedestrian easement through McCormick Pier condos. And 227, request of Catherine Neff to address council regarding request to terminate pedestrian easement through McCormick Pier condos.
Great. Would you like three minutes separately timed, or do you just want six minutes for the two of you? What's, is?
I think six minutes is fine.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate your being here.
So, good morning. My name is Kat Ulrich. And my name is Catherine Neff. So, I'm, we're here on behalf of the McCormick Pier Condo Association, and the Security Committee, of which we're both members. We met here last, last November, when a group of residents from the area came to speak about the safety on Northwest Nato Parkway. And at that time, I asked you specifically for a favor to allow us to close a pedestrian walkway that runs through the property. We were granted that permission by Commissioner Rubio. Thank you very much. As well as reducing the hours for the Willamette Greenway. But that reprieve was for less than four months as a trial period. And that's coming to the close at the end of March, just a little over a week from now. So I reached out to you all in January. You may not know that, but I sent you all emails, and I sent you copies of the Greenway documents. And, and I have, and I asked at that time, and I'm asking you right now, for the council to remove the pedestrian walkway easement that runs through the center of our property. Per the document, in the event city council by ordinance declares a pedestrian easement is no longer needed for public use, the easement shall terminate automatically, and the city shall execute a recordable document evidencing such termination. I know of no one who thinks that the walkway is needed to traverse to the Greenway. It's, the property is open at the south end and the north end. They have all the access they need to get to the Greenway document. If you go down to the South Waterfront, the Greenway walks by all those properties, they don't have permission to walk back and forth through people's private property. Same, should be the same situation at our place. So, we are meeting tomorrow with Alex Stone of Echelon and the newly formed Northwest Community Conservancy, who have operating in the Pearl, but they've asked us to be a part of their newly formed conservancy. They are of the opinion that we do not need to have open, you know, travel through our property. It does not make any sense. So reopening the center walkway without an on-duty security patrol is not part of our solution. And if the city is willing to pay for that security, we could maybe consider it. And I want to be clear that in no way am I asking to remove anything on the Willamette I understand the importance of that to the city of Portland. The pedestrian walkway that crosses the center of our property is quite another matter. So, and as I mentioned, there's access to the Willamette Greenway at the south end and the north end of our property. So the trial period showed us that reducing public traffic has been beneficial. We have more work to do, and our newly established security committee is making headway with major infrastructure updates scheduled over the next 18 months, with added automation to our north driveway gate, so we can keep that closed, and residents can come and go, and building a gate across our south driveway gate, which was actually built without any closure at all and has been wide open. We are budgeted to spend close to $400,000 for these improvements, and in addition to the over $200,000 we pay annually for nighttime security. Opening the gate to passersby is like throwing this money and effort down the drain. It just doesn't make any sense in our environment. It's contrary to everything we have worked to achieve, and diminishes the safety of our residents. It is our hope that you will remove the pedestrian walkway easement from our property, or at the very least, extend the permit in place for closure for an indefinite period of time, which can be reviewed regularly, as we work together to build a stronger and healthier community. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to that. Kat pretty much summed it all up.
Great.
Yeah.
Terrific. Good. So I'll chime in on this. It's not my bureau, so I don't control the decision, but I want to thank you. I want to thank you for the work you've done as a community. I like the fact that, that there's an effort here to reach a partnership with government. I applaud the commissioner in charge for being flexible and working on a temporary solution, and it sounds like, from your perspective, it's worked well. And I know the commissioner in charge will want to speak to the folks.
You changed it to Commissioner Ryan.
I do that from time to time.
Yes, you do.
I like to keep people on their toes and learn new, new talents and skills, and bring new energy and ideas to the table. But I really appreciate what you're doing, and some of the solutions you've put on the table, compromises and offers, and I look forward to continuing to follow it. I just want to put a personal note in, too. I always thought McCormick Pier was the coolest place to live in the city of Portland.
It is.
It is really a remarkable place. And if people aren't familiar with it, it's just stunning. It's a great combination of assets. It's a great recovery of a neighborhood that was previously not being used for much of anything. It was sort of an old industrial site that had fallen into disuse. And it really captures the beauty of the river, as well as the skyline, and it's located close to everything. So I hate the idea that there are safety issues that are frustrating people, and we want to continue to work with you to solve those.
So I did bypass something in here, and I wanted to add.
You had two more minutes.
Okay, good. Adding us to the Clean and Safe District could be a great thing, too, because while Clean and Safe walks down the west side of Nato Parkway, they don't walk down the east side. So, doesn't make really a lot of sense on that. So that's, that's another option for helping us out. And I do want to say that I have spoken with Commissioner Ryan's office, and pretty much was given a thumbs down on doing anything. So, so I'm appealing to you as a city council to help us out in this situation.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here and expressing your thoughts on this.
Yeah.
And again, thanks for what you're doing. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Rubio, do you want to go first, since you have this first?
Oh, I just wanted to chime in in just saying it's great to hear how, the impact of, of what we had discussed. I also just want to acknowledge that you went through a pretty traumatic experience before, which, which led us to having the conversation. And just, I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you both for being here. I didn't know about the thumbs down, so this is a dialogue we're having right now. And I do know that what you're talking about today is embodied with a lot of history with the Willamette Greenway. I know you mentioned some other sites. So this involves not just parks, but BPS and BDS. So holistically, we have to look at these issues. So Commissioner Rubio and I will talk, and we'll figure out what the right steps are to go forward. And we're committed to hearing from all the different stakeholders. I hear what you're saying. I've been there many times along the Greenway.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks for being here.
And we don't want to dump this all on Commissioner Ryan. This is sort of a quirk of our local government. You know, we'll, we'll all see what we can do together. It's not, not on his shoulders alone. This is a complex issue, and we're running into this all over the city, as you can imagine. And so the, the longer term play here is we need to improve public safety in the community. And that largely rests, to me, as the commissioner in charge of the police bureau. And so I'm, I'm listening and taking notes to what you're saying as well. And Commissioner Gonzalez has an important overlay on public safety as well. It's, it's really all of our responsibility.
And I appreciate it.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we'll, we'll talk right after this meeting. We have a meeting scheduled anyway.
Okay.
I actually did have one question, and then just one comment. Could you give the 20-second version of the background of why access was cut off, the history? I just think maybe for some of the audience, it would be helpful to understand.
Oh, just because of crime in the area, people coming onto the Greenway, people walking through our property, they walk, and actually, they walk through that, the whole history of that Greenway comes because there was a, a bridge built across the train tracks, and then that people could just cross Nato Parkway, come through our property, and there was a gazebo down on the river, and they could have a picnic or whatever. The gazebo floated away many years ago. So there's nothing down there except for the Greenway. And now the people who walk across that bridge and come through our property are basically heading into our parking structure and shopping our cars, breaking into our cars, stealing our cars, climbing onto our patios, opening our doors. It just has become an access point for criminals to come through. And they come in one gate, and then they run out the center gate, and no one's the wiser. So having that front door open is just, doesn't make a lot of sense. People from the Pearl District access the Greenway via, you know, Ninth Avenue and come through and walk down there. Again, people from the waterfront come up from the steel bridge. There's no real reason to open our front door and have people walking through our property. And in the current state of our world, having people walk through private property to access a, a public walkway just doesn't make sense when there's other access, you know, available to them.
Got it. And just a technical legal thing to think about, there's a mechanism at times for public entities to vacate an easement or right-of-way. The concept of, which is sort of one bucket, and I think some minds are going to have to put, come together on that one, a limited sort of revocation of access is probably easier to do, so just to calibrate expectations. The concept of doing that indefinitely while the easement is still there, I'm not, I'd have to think about how that can even be done legally. So I think some creative minds can.
Right. And, and we have Knox boxes for emergency personnel to come through, so would always be available for that.
Got it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just, it's, it's a longer conversation, but we are in the middle of a pretty intense humanitarian crisis with the drug overdose crisis that we have, that the state, the county, and the city have been really slow to respond to. And so when these easements, when, when the policies were put into place to have access to the water, because it is a pretty wide step from the beginning and the middle to the end of your property, it was really on the shoulders of the late, great Governor Tom McCall, that always said we should have access to our public waterways. And so there was a reason for putting that in, also to have access to the, the train station for folks. So it's, it's where we are today. These things, this was put into place for all the right reasons, but now we're dealing with a crisis that we're all struggling to figure out how to respond to. So I just want to make sure we have the balanced point of view of why this happened.
Right.
I know you understand that, but I wanted to make sure it got into the public record today.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Next individual, please. Item number 228.
Request of Dina O'Brien to address council regarding livability, and they let us know they're canceling their request.
Is Dina joining us?
They emailed. They're, they're not able to make it today.
Oh, not, not able to be here. Okay, very good. Next individual, 229, please.
Request of Chris Fellini to address council regarding recent changes made to Portland's street response procedure, and they also canceled their request.
Okay, let's see then. We'll go to time. Let's, let's do the consent agenda next, please. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
We received no requests.
Please call the roll.
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, please. Item number 230.
Amend intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between the State of Washington, between State of Washington Department of Transportation and the city for the interstate bridge replacement program for a total amount of $2,974,750.
Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Portland Bureau of Transportation. This ordinance authorizes an amendment to an existing intergovernmental agreement between the State of Washington's Department of Transportation and the city of Portland. The purpose of this IGA is to compensate P-BOT for work the bureau will do to help design a new bridge that will, will connect Portland and Vancouver. Now, this IGA amendment does not change any city policies. Instead, this IGA authorizes the city to accept about $3 million from the interstate bridge replacement project to pay P-BOT for the planning and design work we will do for the interstate bridge project between April 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2025. Today's presentation will provide context for this council's action and discuss the city's priorities for the new bridge. We will also receive a project update from Greg Johnson, who is the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program Administrator. Here from B-POT, from P-BOT to tell us more about this ordinance, we have Caitlin Ref, Major Projects and Partnership Manager with P-BOT. Welcome, Caitlin, and team.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Maps, mayor, and council. I am Caitlin Ref, Major Projects and Partnerships Manager at P-BOT. As Commissioner Maps was just mentioning, we're here today for a council vote on the ordinance to amend our existing city staff, staff services agreement with the Washington State DOT for the interstate bridge replacement program. We'll also just be calling that IVR, mostly from here on out. We last brought IVR to council in July of last year, where the modified locally preferred alternative was endorsed with conditions. And at that time, we had noted that the program, as the program advanced to subsequent phases of work, or reaches major milestones, per the terms of our IGA, we would return to council. So that is why we are here today, both to amend the current IGA and provide an update of major project components, how we've gotten here, and what the program and city priorities are for the coming year. I am happy that the IVR Program Administrator Greg Johnson and Ray Maybe are both here. They're, they'll be able to provide an update and answer any questions from council. So the city of Portland's role continues to be informed by the 2019 Regional Letter of Support signed on to by Mayor Wheeler. That letter acknowledged by state consensus on the need to address earthquake resiliency and provided direction on other areas that were critically important to the project. The modified LPA endorsed last summer is aligned to these priorities, including the need to center the project in climate and equity, right-size the interchange connection need to center the project in climate and equity, right-size the interchange connection at Hayden Island, and manage demand. And these values continue to guide city engagement to date. The IBR project is led by the Program Administrator. Greg and his team are responsible for decision-making and seek to bring forward consensus-based recommendations to the appropriate decision-makers up to the governor's offices. The program includes oversight or regulatory engagement with federal permitting authorities, transportation commissions, and by-state, and includes a by-state legislative oversight committee. The program's also guided by recommendations from the Executive Steering Group, of which Commissioner Maps is our representative, along with seven other by-state jurisdictional partners. There's an equity advisory group and community advisory group that provide advice and recommendations to the ESG and program administrator. As city staff have engaged on the project, PBOT, BPS, BDS, and other partner bureaus have been really looking at the technical design options, methodologies, and possible solutions through a lens of safety, mobility, equity, and climate. We know we need to do much more to address the climate emergency and get transportation emissions down to meet our local, regional, and state goals. We know that the number of traffic deaths on our streets are directly related to the collective amount of driving we do and the speeds we travel at. We know there are identity-based disparities in our transportation system, from household access to a car, to time-spent commuting, and neighborhood exposure to pollutants. So, to address these trends and city priorities, as our region's largest transportation investment, we absolutely need to ensure it provides good, safe, accessible, affordable, and low-carbon multimodal options. The modified LPA, as endorsed last summer, identified the foundational elements of the project that are currently, it's just getting started, being tested through the environmental review process. The project includes the new seismically sound bridge, light rail transit to Vancouver, four lanes per direction over the Columbia River, partial interchange at Hayden Island, a local bridge to Hayden Island, active transportation improvements, variable rate tolling, a commitment to establish greenhouse gas target, and a commitment to develop and implement community benefit and workforce agreements. Also, when the city council endorsed the modified LPA last year, there were 55 conditions of approval included. The IBR program staff, with support of city staff, have been working to address those conditions and incorporate them into the project, with the majority of those being incorporated. IBR is also making progress on the remaining conditions, and we continue to work on these as we participate in the project and will continue to going forward. These conditions were developed after hearing from city council, as well as stakeholders and city committees, commissions, and advisory bodies to ensure that our local priorities are well-defined, actionable, and measurable going forward, and specifically to address those trends in climate equity, safety, and mobility. So, for the rest of this year, city staff are going to be focused on continued collaboration with the IBR team to evaluate technical design reports and design options, the transit program development, and pedestrian and bike connectivity. Will be involved with the development of those community benefit and workforce agreements as they get underway and participate in community outreach activities. Per the terms of the IGA amendment before you today, staff will also assist with review and comment of the supplemental draft environmental impact statement, which we're anticipating would be released for public review later this year. And will continue to coordinate with city modal advisory groups, commissions, and committees when needed. So, now, I'd like to hand it over to Administrator Johnson.
Thank you, Caitlin. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission or council. Once again, my name is Greg Johnson. I'm the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program Administrator. First off, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Maps and members of PBOT, who we interact with on a regular basis, for their cooperation in getting us to this point where we are at now. So, this IGA is tremendously important to help continue to fund that work that city staff is doing on IBR. But a quick update, we are in the National Environmental Policy Act stage. So, NEPA is, we are steaming towards a supplemental environmental impact statement, as Caitlin mentioned, for late this year. We are also looking at getting a final record of decision by the end of 2024. And that's the key endorsement of our federal partners to make this a project. So, we are looking to put in grant applications for the federal funding. One of the key things that they look for is consensus among the communities that are impacted by it. So, we feel that we have good momentum in that space. We are also working towards resolving the issue of bridge height. So, I will ask my cohort, Ray Mabey, to quickly walk us through the United States Coast Guard issue that seems to be the interest of everyone.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council.
Good morning.
I'm Ray Mabey, Assistant Program Administrator. As Greg said, we've been working with the Coast Guard and our other federal partners, the Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration, around the program and what's in the LPA. We've been looking at a bridge height of 116 feet, which was the previous height of the previous effort that we did receive a bridge permit for. We've continued to update our surveys of river use. And if you look at this diagram on the screen, you can tell that the area is a hub of transportation, whether it's river navigation, transportation on the interstate, or the two airports that frame the site. We, in the program, need to be able to optimize the opportunities for every mode and balance those needs. As we work with the Coast Guard, their pure focus is on river navigation, and we respect that. And as they look at the bridge and its use and the users, they look for those reasonable needs of navigation. And in our survey, found that they are, the use of the river really hasn't changed since the previous program, and that they are fabricators upriver that make very big things and need to ship those occasionally. And so, they need to be accommodated or addressed in our project. And so, we are pursuing two paths. We are looking at negotiating with those river users around the mitigation or mitigating impacts to their businesses, such that we can tell the Coast Guard there are no more users that need more than 116 feet. But we're also looking at an option in the NEPA process. We've got the locally preferred alternative, but we've got an option for a movable span. You've probably read that in the papers. The Coast Guard drafted a letter to our federal partners asking that the program include a movable span that provides the existing height of 178 feet or unlimited. And so, the program is working with our federal partners to understand, and our program partners, like the city, to look what that means to add a movable span into the process as an option. Doesn't change the alternative, but provides an option for the bridge crossing itself. We anticipate that this will impact our schedule for the draft, but we're really trying to hold that final impact statement date of the end of next year. We are threading the needle here with the river traffic, providing enough clearance there, but also Pearson Airfield and Porton International Airport. These are, the flight paths and flight path envelopes are very close to the bridge. In fact, at 116 feet are light poles. If standard height, would impact Pearson Airfield airspace. So, it lets you know the challenges we face here and the balancing needs.
So, we are, our pressing need now is to stay on schedule. We know that we put out a cost estimate last winter that said our costs will be between five to seven and a half billion. That seven and a half billion will happen if we get off schedule. If we stay on schedule and mitigate risk, we will more than likely be in the six billion or less range. So, that is our key charge now, to stay on schedule, to get the federal grants. We are in front of the Oregon Legislature currently asking them for a billion dollars to help move this program forward. So, at this point, we will take any questions that the council may have.
Go ahead, Dan. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Maps had his hands.
No, I'm just going to ask, when I get my turn, I'll just ask some background questions to educate the public.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Number one, thank you, everybody, for your work on this important project. Thank you for being here today and this presentation. Just a couple of quick questions that I think will help Oregonians and Portlanders understand this project more clearly. Okay, once this bridge is built, can you just give me a quick overview of my options to get between Portland and Vancouver on public transportation?
So, right now, we are, we are working with both Trimate and C-Trans. We are looking at the extension of the yellow line across the I-5 corridor up to Evergreen Street, where there will be a transit hub. We also have express bus, where we will be putting buses on shoulders. That's one of the options that we are looking at to move that bus traffic quicker through the corridor. And we are also looking at how we can improve the bike-walk connections in the area to make this a truly multimodal corridor.
That's great. I'm really delighted to hear that. And the tail end of your comments actually answered a question, which I want to make explicit. Let's say I want to, let's say I work in Vancouver, live in Portland, and want to ride my bike across this next bridge. Will I be able to do that?
You will. We are making connections to both local and regional bike-walk facilities to make it simple. We will have wayfinding. Currently, if you go through that corridor now, you're, it's kind of a confusing maze of how to get to the bridge. So, we will have definite wayfinding and a separate path across the river that will be modernized, will be approximately at minimum 14 feet wide to move bikers and walkers and rollers across the bridge itself.
Great. I'm delighted to hear that. Okay, let's say the big one, the big earthquake happens someday. Can you tell me what we would expect if, you know, a nine-level earthquake were to hit our current bridge versus a nine-level earthquake were to hit our, the next bridge?
I'm going to turn it over to our bridge expert, Ray, to answer that one.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Maps. Currently, the existing bridges were built in 1917, 1958. That was before any design criteria for seismic came along. And so, they really don't have any design strength for that. They are founded on timber piles that are in liquefiable soils that go down over 200 feet. Those timber piles only reach 50 to 70 feet. So, they're, they're vulnerable to a large earthquake, vulnerable to collapse in a Cascadia subductional earthquake. So, as we look at this corridor and what we want to do, we want to make sure that we have seismic resiliency that can withstand and have a serviceable bridge in case of Cascadia. And so, we will have foundations that will hit that trout-tail formation, the compacted soils that are down 200-plus feet. Similar to what we're seeing with the work on I-205 foundations going on right now.
Great. I just, I think, two more questions. I know if you're following this project in the papers, probably one of the things that really jumps out at you are the sort of cost associated with it. But I want to be clear on what's happening today in terms of cost. What's happening today is we're actually accepting $3 million from the project to support PBOT's work in helping design a bridge that fits Portland's needs. And thank you for your support. We're really glad to partner with you on this. Do you expect at any point in the future for this project, you're going to come to this council seeking significant dollars to support this? Or are we a funder for this bridge? Are we a planner for this bridge?
Currently, the city of Portland is not a funder for this bridge. You are a partner. And we are, as we looked at conditions and as we go into community benefits discussions, there may be some ask that our program cannot do, that we may ask the city to help participate in, things that are out of the realm of control of a DOT, of a bridge program. So, when we talk about housing opportunities, converting vacant property to potential low-income housing, that's, that's not what we do.
Sure.
But we may ask our partners, such as you guys, such as Metro, to help in that arena. So, but as far as the overall funding, we're looking at three fundamental sources. The two states putting in a billion each. We're looking at tolling to put in approximately a billion to 1.2 billion. And the remainder, we're looking to our federal partners, since this is the interstate. We're looking to them to, the highway portion, to bring in close to $2 billion, and our transit, Federal Transit Agency, to bring in a billion dollars.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's important for folks to understand the financing mechanisms around this. My last question for today, let's just think about the state of Oregon. Do we have any estimates on the return on investment for every dollar that the state of Oregon puts into this project?
We do. Our program has just completed a economic impact analysis, and we know that this $6 billion investment over the 10-year time period is going to create approximately 43,000 jobs.
Forty-three thousand jobs.
That folks will be paying and going to businesses in the area. And we will have local contractors and subcontractors also involved. So, this is going to be an economic boom. We think at minimum, we'll be looking at a $11 billion return on that $6 billion investment.
Well, that is exciting to hear. Thank you. I have no more questions. I'll just say, colleagues, as this project moves forward, I think Oregon's going to need to focus on training a new generation of engineers, and I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'll hand the mic back to Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, and thanks for being here. Kathleen, Greg, Ray, right? Okay. I had the pleasure of spending a couple hours over there with Mayor Ann of Vancouver. I'd say she's the big cat herder of this project locally, which is what you said you needed to do. So, I always like to give her credit where it's due. And she explained all of this really well. So, I really appreciate what Commissioner Maps and the dialogue that just took place. What's different, though, about today, that I can tell, unless I'm missing something, is that Mayor Ann explained the importance of trying to have the height up there, even though the Coast Guard thing was already, there was some heat on that literally in July, but it was still agreed upon to keep that height up and avoid the traffic delays that constantly happen. So, my question is, and I was listening, is how much further down is the bridge going to go? Because it sounds like you're lowering it from 116 because of airspace concerns, but you're also needing to do the drawbridge again because of Coast Guard and vessel concerns. Is that why we're here today? Is it adding the drawbridge that wasn't there last time? Or did I miss something in July?
Commissioner Ryan, Mayor Wheeler. So, as, while we're here today is to talk about the IGA and provide a program update, but the, the bridge height.
Of course, of course. But it's still important for us to track how things are changing. That's our job.
Definitely. So, and provide discussion around these topics. So, definitely happen to have that. So, you're right in saying that the program partners have said, "We don't want a stop sign on the interstate, the one continuous interstate on the west coast between Canada and Mexico." We know that that causes backups and a lift span, much like we have on the steel bridge here in Portland, causes operational issues for light rail. So, we know that there are complications. But we also need to meet, address the concerns of the Coast Guard and look at what a movable span impacts and benefits would be in the supplemental environmental impact statement process. The fixed span height that we're looking at is at 116 feet. As we look at examining a movable span, we would be looking at how to accommodate that movable span and actually provide a flat section for that movable span. Typically, movable spans are not in an area where there's a vertical curve. And so, that would lower the profile maybe to 110, between 100 and 110 feet. That would impact potential more users with a lift span. It wouldn't impact them because we could lift. However, it means that there's going to be additional lifts that there wouldn't be at 116 feet. Again, that's.
Is this the compromise then, when you're working with the port?
Yes.
Okay, all the parties that, I assume, have been talking to you since the last presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. And what's the current height? I'm curious now.
The current clearance with the both bridges up is 178 feet. And to give you perspective.
Oh, I mean today. I'm just curious today.
Today, yes, 178 feet. Oh, without, without the spans up?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, it's, I think, at the bridge location, it's about 60, 65 feet.
Okay, so we're still doing a considerable rise. So, we'll have much less bridge raises. Okay, great. I just wanted to continue to geek out on the details of this. And I'm really proud that the intergovernment agreement's going on. But it's important, since I live in North Portland, people ask questions. I just want to make sure. to make sure I understood what the changes are from when you were here in July. Thank you.
Definitely appreciate it, Commissioner. And just to give you a sense of why those bridges were built so high, at that time, the river commerce was, was being put forth by tall ships. They had masts. That's why you have 170 feet, because that was how they propelled the vessels. That's not what we have today.
Very good. Anybody else?
I just have one question. Does anybody think a movable span is actually a good idea? I mean, I'm not a transportation designer, but it strikes me as just dumb on its face. Am I wrong?
So, the, the Federal Highway Administration-
Why are we wasting money studying the drawbridge?
The Federal Highway Administration has gone through a, a torturous period of removing all of the movable spans on the interstate across the country.
Yeah, it seems like that's been the longstanding goal for decades. Why, why are we considering going backwards?
And because the Coast Guard, because we have a navigable river, and we have users that, that have a need for, for more than the 116, that is the only reason that we are examining this issue because of that.
But, but tell me, we're not gonna do it?
We are, we have, we have two paths going forward. The path that we think is most viable is the negotiation with those users and mitigate those folks. If we build a lift bridge, the additional cost to the program will be actually close to $500 million additional.
Well, as, as you pointed out correctly, it's not, it's not just a cost for engineering and building a bridge. The costs go all throughout the transportation system. It's delivery of goods and services and the ability of people to transport back and forth. I thought that was the, sort of, one of the key problems we're trying to solve, other than, of course, the fact that the bridge is so old that it, it'll fall down in even a questionably large earthquake. It's just antiquated.
So, so we know that the one path of negotiation with those users, we, if we reach agreement, we are able to satisfy the Coast Guard's needs of no one will need more than 116 feet if we are successful in those negotiations.
And I assume the administration could override this if they so chose?
Yes.
You know, ultimately, they decide, right? They're, you know, not to pull up-
Everyone has a boss.
-a great phrase, but they're the deciders, right? I mean, somebody could say, "No, look, this, this is not where we're gonna go with this project."
I think that, that's true, Mayor Wheeler. The, the Coast Guard, like, is responsible for their navigation. As we know, the Coast Guard does many other things. They, they, they rescue people in distress all over, all over our coastline. So, they've got very important and critical work to do, as well as managing their navigable waterways.
Yeah, and I understand and appreciate it. I love the work the Coast Guard does. They save many, many lives every year. You know, our security team in here is responsible for our security, but they don't tell us where we can and where we can't go. We make that decision.
We do need a bridge permit from them. And, and so, they, that, that is a process, like Greg mentioned, that one path is to work with impacted users, reach agreement, and have the Coast Guard revise their navigation clearance determination, and then seek a bridge permit. The other is to study a movable span. As we're studying these options, doesn't mean we're gonna build them. It just means we need to understand the impacts and the benefits.
Okay, fine. And I, I've talked this one to death, and I, I think I know exactly where you stand on this, and I appreciate it. And I had to read a little between the lines, but I've, I think I've confirmed what I wanted to confirm, which is ultimately positive. Thank you. And just one comment. The last time we went through this exercise, particularly with the, the shipping interests upriver, I'm certainly sympathetic to their needs and their concerns. But I think the public would also want to know that if we're going to add significant cost to this project, which is ultimately borne by the taxpayers, wouldn't we also want a commitment from those private sector employers that if we make these investments, they're sticking around for a while?
That, that is part of the analysis and the conversation that we will have with them. We're not gonna write a check to them and they close their doors tomorrow or five years from tomorrow. So, those are, are things that are part of the conversation with those impacted users.
Right. And, and I'm obviously aware of the fact, there's macroeconomics, and people can't control everything that happens to their business. But to the degree that they can make decisions, I would want them to decide to stay if we're making an investment to accommodate their particular needs, right?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Anybody else? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, just on that note, I wanted to make sure in the record, is it, what's the additive cost then, since last time you were here, to put the movable structure in? Is it 500 million?
500 million in today's dollars. So, we haven't escalated that to the year of expenditure to bill that, so.
Okay.
There would also be ongoing operational costs, as any movable span has, of staffing and maintenance.
All right. Thanks for sending, spending some more time on what was different about when you were here in July. I appreciate it.
Cool. Good. Thank you. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the rule.
Rubio.
I want to thank Commissioner Maps and PBOT staff for your work on this, and also thank our presenters who are here today for the update on this project and this IGA. It's great to hear about the strong progress on Portland's conditions for approval as well. I know this is a really complex project and glad to see our city team engaged. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, I thank Commissioner Maps for bringing this forward. Thank you for the transparent dialogue that's necessary. I've been following this since I lived on Hayden Island as a teenager, so it's been something I've been looking at much of my life and the impact. I actually like the way you've taken care of Hayden Island in this specific project. I again want to acknowledge your colleague, Commissioner Maps, that you're probably getting to know much better now, Mayor Anne in Vancouver. I always look forward to keeping up to date with this project. It's really on the top of mind for many of the people in North Portland where I live. So, I appreciate the update. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I want to thank you for your report and our government partners that are piling away at this. It's obviously a significant project for the region that's long overdue, so let's get her done. I vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank our panel for today's presentation, and I want to thank my colleagues for that rich dialogue. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I enjoy hearing these conversations, and I appreciate the updates and the diligence you're putting into it. Obviously, I support the project. There's details that have yet to be worked out, and I look forward to watching how those details unfold. I appreciate you, Commissioner Maps, for being our representative in this conversation and the efforts you've taken to bring the council along and understand what is ultimately a very complex project. I also just want you to know, I'm keeping my eye on two different projects simultaneously, and they're related, and they're both important to the future of the city of Portland. Of course, this one that we've been discussing today, the Rose Quarter Project as well. I don't believe one can happen without the other, so I'm, I'm watching both with equal interest, and I just want you to be aware of that. Happy to vote aye. The ordinance is approved, the IGA is approved. Good work. Keep at it. Next time certain please, 2:31, a resolution.
Direct the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to review Portland's franchise system for the collection of residential solid waste recycling and composting.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. Our city uses a franchise system to deliver and oversee garbage recycling and compost collection services for 155,000 households living in single-family residences up to fourplexes. Franchise systems are by far the most common approach for cities and counties to oversee these kinds of services in Oregon. And they have proven to be a valuable and effective way to deliver services over the years for several reasons. Thanks in large part to our system, garbage gets picked up on time for a reasonable price, and we have been able to give our community members more opportunity to recycle and compost waste. Today's resolution initiates a process that has been a useful component in how Portland has stewarded this system. Franchise reviews have always been a collaborative process with business and community partners and done in regular intervals since we adopted the franchise system in 1992. And it is also important that we take an active role in the evolution of this system so that we can ensure it meets the needs and values of our community today. I also want to acknowledge that the system review only addresses one slice of our community's experience with waste and recycling. And beyond this process, BPS is doing important work to open up opportunities for new service providers to better reflect our sector, this sector's growing diverse businesses in order to participate in collection services. For example, we are using our contracting power for public can collection and for city facilities collection to create, to create opportunities for new entrants representing women and BIPOC ownership. There is also work to do outside the residential service review to ensure that collection services for businesses and multifamily communities are accessible, inclusive, and serve our community well. And while the reviews and agreements we have with our collectors are not the only tools to keep our systems current, they are valuable ones. And if we approve this resolution today, we will be asking our Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to initiate a six-month review process and report back to us. We will also be approving the attached guiding principles that will inform this process. They include advancing sustainability and climate goals, ensuring cost-effective, safe, and environmentally sound operations, providing exemplary customer service, and also developing an equitable and resilient system. Once approved today, we will have the option to renew the term of the franchises via a new franchise agreement approved with a public comment period. And finally, I want to be clear that the resolution we are voting on today does not make any big decisions about the franchise system or how we govern collection in our city. It launches a process to review our system and decide whether to extend the residential franchises. So, now I'd like to introduce Donnie Oliveira, Director of BPS, to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Can we have the deck teed up, please? Thank you. Good morning, Council. Donnie Oliveira, Director of BPS, for the record. I'd like to start by acknowledging a truism about waste services in general, but it's absolutely appropriate here in Portland. Most people don't think about their interaction with trash because in Portland, you put your materials in the bin, it gets taken to the curb, it gets picked up, and you just do it on repeat. And it's almost like a secondhand. And that's actually a real luxury and benefit that the city of Portland has in that we have world-class curbside service. And that is, and in large part, due to the great relationship that the city's had historically with our haulers, but also that the city has committed to waste reduction, recycling, composting, organics, collection services as a priority. And it's in processes like these that we get to evaluate those services and think, how are we meeting our goals? How are we ensuring that our equity, sustainability, climate, and frankly, world-class services are continuing to be met? And so, as you think about this process today, we're teeing off an opportunity for us to evaluate this with our hauling partners, with other stakeholders, how we ensure people don't think too much about their waste services because it happens consistently on time and, frankly, with, with realistic costs comparative to every major city in the, in the country. And so, before we kick off the presentation, I want to offer two things for you to think about, and hopefully, with a final ask. One is that, as Commissioner Rubio alluded to, this is just one slice of the waste pie in the city of Portland, but it's an important one. We want to maintain a strong, consistent service in this. So, we're looking at tweaking around the edges to ensure that we keep a high functioning service. Second, there is so much more to be done in terms of waste in the city. I'll acknowledge that it's very difficult for me to go across the city and not see trash in our streets. And while this isn't addressing that, I want to acknowledge that waste is on people's minds. And so, I want to just really emphasize that we want to tackle all the different facets of our waste challenges in the city while maintaining the high service that we do have. So, let's not rock the boat too much to, to try to solve another piece. And the last thing I want to acknowledge here, and this is an ask, we would love the participation of your staff on this journey over these next six months, as we set aside new policy opportunities, what resonates with you all. It'd be valuable to have you and your team influencing that along the way. And last but not least, before I hand it off, I'd like to introduce BPS and the City of Portland Solid Waste Manager, Evan Polk. He just started with us a few months ago. A much-needed vacancy has been filled with a leader in his, in his field, so I'm real excited to have Evan here, and he'll be working with you and your team over the next six months on this process. So, with that, Evan, please, the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Donnie. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. It's good to be here. For the record, my name is Evan Polk, and as Donnie mentioned, I am the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's new Solid Waste and Recycling Manager. It's a pleasure to be here before you today to introduce this resolution that would initiate a six-month review process for our residential collection franchise system. And with us today as well, I want to acknowledge Kerry Walker with Walker Garbage Services, who will be sharing a little bit later. I'm gonna share some background about the waste collection system in Portland, specifically the residential franchise system, the purpose of this review process, and we'll touch briefly on the prior review so we can frame up the 2023 review. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, next slide after that. Thank you. So, Portland generates just over a million tons of waste each year. One way of slicing the data is by looking at which sectors of activity the waste is coming from. Seventy-two percent of the waste in our community comes from the commercial sector, which includes businesses, construction and demolition, and multifamily properties that have five or more units. Twenty-eight percent of the waste in Portland is collected through the residential collection system that serves single-family homes through fourplexes. This is a system that the city administers via a franchise and which is the subject of this review process. These customers all use roll carts for garbage, mixed recycling, and organic materials, plus a small bin for glass. Another way of slicing this is, is looking at the percent of materials that we recover for recycling and composting to keep out of the landfill. Donnie mentioned the importance of that for our system and our community, and that figure as of 2021 was 55 percent. That's what we recover. Next slide, please. There are a number of mechanisms for delivering garbage and recycling collection services. State law explicitly provides wide authority to cities and counties to regulate solid waste services. Some cities provide the service directly, some bid out contracts, but by far, the most common approach in Oregon and in our area is a publicly regulated franchise system. Portland's franchise system was established 30 years ago as part of the city's strategy to implement city week, citywide weekly recycling. In 1992, we started with 69 franchisees. Many of them were just one employee and a truck. The franchise was identified at that time as a regulatory mechanism that could support these companies in making the investments they needed to make in new trucks and recycling bins. One way to think of a franchise system is as a pub, like a hybrid public-private system that helps ensure there are strong incentives to deliver cost-effective service every year while still providing great efficiencies and collection and, and adaptability, ensuring that our community through our elected leaders can define the service we want and then set a fair rate for that service. The franchise system has indeed allowed us that flexibility to make program changes over the last 30 years. We've added yard debris collection, commingled recycling, then weekly food scrap collection, and we've also been able to move towards cleaner fuels and safer trucks. The franchise system has also provided us with stability and buoyed the system during market fluctuations and difficult economic times, which we know we've seen at least a few times since the franchise was started. Next slide, please. This slide shows the collection service providers currently in the system and the number of customers they serve. As a reminder, each customer in this system is a household in a single-family dwelling up to a fourplex. The franchise system right now, today, includes both smaller locally-owned companies and larger corporations. Each one of these needs to be a party to the franchise agreement as part of the system. Through gradual consolidation over the years from the original 69 franchisees, now we have nine companies operating franchises. Consolidation occurs when a franchisee chooses to sell their business to another company. Next slide, please. There are a few components to the system we use to oversee the garbage and recycling franchise system. We use city code, administrative rule, and the franchise agreement, which takes the form of an ordinance adopted by the council. Most of the rules governing the collection service reside in our administrative rules. For example, when, how the service must be provided, under what conditions, fees. The franchise agreement requires that our franchise collectors or haulers abide by the city's administrative rules. And the agreement also establishes the territories that each company must serve. It lays out the methodology used in our annual rate review process, for example, by identifying the types of costs that can be incurred that the city will include in setting the rate. The franchise agreement also identifies the franchise fee that we receive to fund our work, as well as the target operating margin. So, the renewal process for that franchise agreement is what we're here to discuss today. Next slide, please. The city's franchise agreement has a term of 12 years. The timeline for the current franchise agreement is identified by the upper line in the slide you see here, the green line. That agreement expires in 2031. Under the agreement, at a five, a point five years into the term, a review may be initiated, and we are in the window identified by the little red arrows marked as a six-month review process. process. This midterm review process has been conducted regularly since the inception of the franchise in 1992. So if you choose to initiate the review process today, as the resolution directs, then we will report back to you in six months. And at that time, if the council chooses to renew to a new 12-year term, then the franchise agreement would shift to the lower timeline shown on this slide with a new 12-year term. If you choose not to renew it, the franchise agreement would continue along the upper franchise horizon line and expire in 2031. Next slide, please. So the franchise agreement, as I mentioned, identifies a window of time in which a midterm review can be initiated, and we are currently in that window. The review may be initiated by you, as today's resolution would accomplish, or can be initiated by franchisees representing 50% of the customer base. Under the review process spelled out in the franchise agreement, city staff would report back to you in six months, and then the review would result in an updated franchise agreement that you can consider and adopt. So that's the ultimate deliverable for this process. I mentioned previously that the franchise agreement is just one component of the city's approach to regulating collection systems. We also use code and admin rule. And in some cases, the franchise review process could identify ideas or priorities that might be subsequently detailed in code or administrative rules or which are better addressed through other venues, but the review process can identify those for subsequent work. Next slide, please. So franchise review, that's the opportunity to assure that the agreement is still helping us meet our goals to provide high-quality garbage recycling and composting collection to the community that's reliable, cost-effective, sustainable, and equitable. It's an opportunity to continue evolving our system, to continue providing value to our community. Couple of things that it's not, it's not the process for reviewing individual companies to determine if they're worthy of maintaining a franchise. This is a system review. This project is also distinct from our annual fee review process, which is currently underway and which will result in you seeing some proposed residential collection fees and hearings in a couple of months. It's also a separate process. This review allows us to look at a variety of pieces of context, whether that's different indicators of performance, feedback from customers, comparative analyses, our equity values, and overall public interest, and ask ourselves how we want to see the system continue to evolve. I want to speak for a moment specifically about waste equity. So next slide, please. The last review that was done, and these have been done regularly since the inception of the franchise, last review was in 2017 and 18, and equity in the waste system was the primary theme. Excuse me. It's also one of the guiding principles identified for this midterm review. It was critical to acknowledge and identify opportunities for improvement and to look at the history of our system. And the review allowed the city to look at opportunities to reduce barriers to economic opportunities for BIPOC and woman-owned companies, better understand and increase participation of BIPOC and women workers in the space. And the city's waste equity work plan was then developed to identify opportunities in this space, not only the residential system, but also the rest of the system that we oversee. Here on this slide are some of the outcomes in waste equity since that time. I want to mention that Portland haulers took the initiative to partner with Work Systems Incorporated to establish free CDL driver training program called Driving Diversity, which has now graduated, I think, seven or eight classes with about 75 graduates. We've begun to collect more workforce demographic data. The city formed an ad hoc waste equity advisory group to help guide our work under the waste equity work plan, and a key takeaway from that group was that we needed to broaden our understanding of how to bring equity and diversity into waste collection as a system, looking not only at, but beyond the franchise residential system to include other collectors, customers, and the city's other roles as a buyer of services and a regulator of commercial multifamily services. So to that end, for example, we've established a group class special procurement tool, which allows us to diverge from state procurement rules when the city needs to, to procure our own waste collection services, and we're using that tool to level the playing field and focus bidding opportunities on companies that are certified by the state as BIPOC or woman-owned. We've awarded public trash contracts worth 1.2 million annually to a BIPOC-owned company that's allowed them to purchase new collection vehicles. This year, we're also coordinating the development of new contracts for garbage and recycling service at city facilities, and we're taking a new approach to target COVID providers in that process. We've also begun partnering with local nonprofit Trash for Peace to pilot bulky waste collection at multifamily properties. That's kind of a synergistic effort that allows us to open up new opportunities, but also look at improving service to multifamily residents. We definitely think there are opportunities still in this space, and we'll continue to pursue those both within the franchise system and in the commercial and multifamily collection areas. So now I want to turn our attention to the 2023 review that's proposed. In your packet is Exhibit A to the proposed resolution, which outlines guiding principles for the review process. Yes, thank you. Next slide. These principles, as Commissioner Rubio mentioned, are to advance sustainability and climate goals, ensure cost-effective, safe, and environmentally sound operations, provide exemplary customer service, develop an equitable and resilient system. And then lastly, although it's not in the guiding principles, we do want to specifically call out that at council's direction, we will make space in this franchise review process to discuss the provision of enhanced recycling services in the community, such as those provided by Ridwell. That's a commitment that you've made and that we'll follow through on in this process. Next slide, please. So we have a, I don't know what the term is, maybe a deep bench of interested parties and stakeholders that we would turn to as part of this process, and this slide just lists a few of those consultations that we expect to occur in the next six months, leading to a decision by city council at the six-month point in September. Next slide, please. So here against the process, we've previously identified and drafted the guiding principles that you have in your packet, along with the resolution. We're here today to potentially launch the review process. Between April and August, we'll be doing research, outreach, and engagement, and drafting proposed updates to the franchise agreement. We then report back to you in September for a decision on whether to renew the franchise term with potentially like a line item changed, revised franchise agreement. Next slide. So just to bring it back to the decision that we're asking you to make today, it's whether or not to adopt the resolution that would direct us to review the franchise system for the collection of residential solid waste recycling and composting. I want to thank you for your time, and as we wrap up, ask Carrie Walker McCullough with Walker Garbage Services, who's representing the Portland Haulers Association. We had asked her to be here today, and I'd like to turn it over to her for a few more remarks.
Thank you, Evan. Commissioner Rubio, Mayor Wheeler, and members of the council, for the record, my name is Carrie Walker McCullough. My family owns and operates Walker Garbage Service in northwest Portland. And we are proud that through the regulated franchise system, we provide residential curbside garbage, recycling, yard debris, and composting services to over 150,000 households in the city of Portland. And on behalf of the Portland residential haulers, I went to express our continued commitment to providing good quality services on behalf of the city to the people in Portland. We believe it's through this system that the public can be assured that the rates they pay for the services they receive are fair and equitable, and that our operations are environmentally sound and efficient. We fully endorse the guiding principles that Evan presented from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and are looking forward to the renewal process over the next six months. We believe this is an opportunity to build on our successes of the past, but also to improve and find innovation that keeps us aligned with the values of the city of Portland and the residents. And if you look at our record of partnership, we have consistently met the challenges of evolving recycling markets, innovation in transportation and operations, and adapting to meet the growing needs of the residents in Portland. Like all industries, a pandemic hit us. We're still recovering and working to recruit a stable workforce. However, despite the challenges, we never stopped service, not even when our customers couldn't pay us. We kept servicing the community during the pandemic, which was not the case for many of our counterparts in other parts of the country. And the same can be said for inclement weather, the heat of last summer, and our recent snow and ice in March, which we don't usually have to deal with. We also take our role as employers very seriously. Our employees make a good family wage, they have excellent benefits, and they have stable, quality careers with opportunity for growth. But we also know that as contractors with the city of Portland, it is our responsibility to help identify other ways that we can contribute to a more diverse workforce, which is why we were so happy to participate in the Driving Diversity Program, and then also to find growth opportunities in our industry for women-owned businesses and businesses owned by the BIPOC community. So we care deeply about our employees and the people we serve in Portland, who are not just our customers, but our friends and our neighbors, and we appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Does that complete the presentation?
Yes.
Very good. Do we have public testimony on this item? It's a resolution?
No one signed up.
Very good. Why don't we call the roll, and I'm sure we'll have some comments for you.
Rubio.
I'd like to take a moment to thank Director Oliveira, Carrie, and Evan for the presentation today. And Evan, we're really thrilled to have you in the BPS team, and thanks so much for getting right to work on this and jumping right in and bringing this important resolution forward. This franchise review is a very crucial step to making sure our residential franchise system is staying strong in meeting our standards and providing services to our community in an efficient and cost-effective manner. I look forward to hearing more about this as the work unfolds, and great work, everyone. Thanks. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Good to see you, Donnie. Welcome, Evan. Great presentation. It's so wonderful to have somebody that runs a company that does this hard work. Great to see you, Carrie.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I actually love these presentations. If you own a home and you put it out once a week, or you have a neighbor that reminds you, nudges you at 10 o'clock at night when you forget to put it out, you know, you're attached to this topic, like you live it. I do look forward to how we work in the, seems like success is how the services, is it Ridwell? Is that the name? Yeah. What they're providing, how we incorporate that service into our system. And I know it's there now, but it seems like that's one of the tension points that we have to work through over the next six months. I look forward to hearing about how that process is going. I recognize our legal requirements, and we need to address all of this at this time. I really liked your performance indicators. I think it seems like success is how to keep increasing the percent that goes into the landfill. You say 55% now?
In 2021.
In 2021. So that would be your big key performance measure on the macro level. So and then what do you do for the sub-indicators to make that happen? So anyway, I'm looking forward to how this keeps evolving. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Thank you for the report. I vote aye.
Maps.
Yeah, I want to thank the panel for today's presentation, and I would like to thank Commissioner Rubio and Planning and Sustainability for bringing this item forward. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, I want to thank you. Great presentation. I concur with my colleagues. Carrie, thank you. We started this meeting off hearing from a young doctor who gets up at 4:30 a.m. and works 80-hour weeks, in case any of us need help in a hospital. And the trash haulers are in a similar vein. They get up super early, the work is often very tiresome and thankless and potentially dangerous, inclement weather, the whole works. I can tell you that in my neighborhood, I'm very, very happy that we have family-owned franchises here in the city of Portland. That's not the case across the country. Many cities just have one large master service provider. Yes, it's probably overall less expensive as a system, but it doesn't really reflect, I think, the same values that are reflected through these franchise agreements with family-owned operators, who, as you say, do care deeply. To the public, please, as you're filling your trash bins, do not overfill them. It makes their jobs so much harder. And I see my trash haulers who come through very early in the morning, picking up the garbage that has fallen over the sides of the containers because raccoons and cats and everything else got them, and they don't complain, they just do their jobs, they keep their head down, and they make it work for the rest of us. And so I just want you to know, Carrie, I see you, I see the people who work with you and for you, and I'm really appreciative of the work they do. Good presentation. I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. Thank you all. Colleagues, I'm going to do our first switchie on the agenda, please. Can we call item number 239? This is an emergency ordinance, please.
Pay settlement of Patrick Cunningham, personal injury claim for $50,000 involving the Portland Bureau of Emergency Communications.
This ordinance resolves a claim brought against the city back in June of 2021. Senior Claims Analyst David Farrow is here to briefly walk us through the ordinance. Welcome, David. How are you today?
Good. Mayor Wheeler, good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Patrick Cunningham, this is an ordinance to approve the settlement of Patrick Cunningham's claim. He was a Good Samaritan on the night of February 6, 2021. He interrupted a DoorDash delivery to stop and render aid to a hit-and-run victim he encountered in the middle of Southeast Stark. He was on scene for several minutes. He spoke to a 911 dispatcher about the condition of the victim, which proved to be fatal, and the aid he rendered. He's a retired firefighter from South Carolina. He gave his name to the dispatcher, and then he left to continue his delivery. Other people stopped as well. On one of those calls, they called 911. On one of the calls, the dispatcher asked the following question. Did the car that stopped, is it still there? The car that was that hit them? And the bystander on the call relayed information about vehicles stopped at the scene and identifying Mr. Cunningham's Jeep and his license plate. The Boick dispatcher understood this information to be about suspect vehicles, and then identified Mr. Cunningham's Jeep to Portland Police and Route. They quickly spotted his Jeep, and multiple vehicles engaged in a boxing maneuver to bring him to a stop. He was ordered out of his Jeep. He complied, and he was handcuffed. And as he was standing roadside, cuffed on Southeast Stark, he insisted this was a mistaken identity. And within about 10 to 15 minutes, the officers determined the same, and they handcuffed him, and they cleared their police vehicles to reduce the spectacle. But Mr. Cunningham and his passengers, he was with his fiancee and her three minor children, three minor daughters. They were delayed about an hour, waiting for the police accident specialist to conduct a forensic inspection of the Jeep, which would formally clear him. After an investigation, risk management determined that the police officer's conduct was appropriate for a fatal hit-and-run stop. However, the experience was psychologically jarring and unpleasant for Mr. Cunningham, and it would not have occurred but for the ambiguous questioning that should have been avoided by the Boick dispatcher. Mr. Cunningham filed his tort claim with the city in June 2021. His attorney provided a copy of a draft Multnomah County Circuit Court complaint. Having been subjected unnecessarily to the dramatic traffic stop and having endured the spectacle of being publicly handcuffed and detained, Mr. Cunningham would have asserted claims for civil rights violations, race discrimination, negligence, assault, and battery. Risk management determined that the city's interests were best served by engaging in settlement negotiations, which were undertaken with his attorney, and we recently agreed to resolve his claim for $50,000. This is inclusive of attorney fees and liens. There's no admission of city liability, and the settlement allows for the city to avoid the cost of defending a lawsuit and the risk of a verdict in excess of $50,000. And I'll take your questions.
Colleagues, any questions before we go to public testimony? Seeing none, do we have public testimony?
No one signed up.
Call the roll.
Rubio.
The situation, I can understand, is incredibly frightening, and I can't imagine what Mr. Cunningham and his family went through. I just want to thank him for jumping into support of a person in need and say I'm sorry that things transpired as they did. I'm happy to vote aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
This happened on my watch when I was the commissioner in charge of Boick. This is most unfortunate. This is most unfortunate. I want to thank Mr. Cunningham for being a good Samaritan, and I want to issue a personal apology to him. I think there's some lessons to be learned here, and I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Likewise. There was clearly a miscommunication here. Mr. Cunningham and his fiancee and his family paid the price for that. I want to personally apologize to you, Mr. Cunningham, and to your fiancee. Maybe you've tied the knot since then. I don't know. And certainly to your daughters. This is a very unfortunate situation, and I apologize. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to the forfeits item, please. Item number 246.
Ratify collective bargaining agreement with Portland City Laborers relating to the terms and conditions of employment of represented employees.
Colleagues, on February 4th, the City and Labor's Local 483, the Portland City Laborers, found agreement on a successor labor contract for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2026. The parties began their work in March of 2022, and through a collaborative effort, reached an agreement which benefited the city and employees covered by this new contract. The agreement not only ended the city's first work stoppage in many years, it also provides for a number of new agreements, which benefit the city and Portland City Laborers members, including market wage adjustments, increases in standby pay and shift differentials, reduced waiting periods for sick and vacation accruals, increased clothing allowances, and the removal of the sick leave cap for dependent care, among other enhancements. Members of the Portland City Laborers Union voted to ratify this tentative agreement on February 25th of 2023. Our Director of Employee and Labor Relations, Ron Zito, is here to walk us through the ordinance. Is he on?
I don't see that he's in.
Okay, we will go to the emergency item number. Hang on. We wanted to go to the one for Commissioner Rubio, which is which one, Commissioner?
246.
246, please.
Oh wait, I'm sorry.
Is it 242?
243.
243. Very good. Thank you.
243. Accept the State of Housing in Portland 2022 Report.
Thank you. The Portland Housing Bureau has been publishing an annual housing report for the last eight years, and the report has provided local leaders and policymakers.
Commissioner Rubio, I'm sorry. Can we, sorry, today's agenda is a little complicated. Could we defer that? We have people waiting for the GTAC. Let's go ahead and do that one.
Sure.
Prior, and then we'll get to that before you have to depart. So let's do 232 next, and then we will go back to Commissioner Rubio's item. 232, please.
Point Members to the Government Transition Advisory Committee for Terms to Expire March 30th, 2025.
Colleagues, today we appoint the Government Transition Advisory Committee, which marks yet another important milestone in the implementation of the city charter reform passed last November. This advisory committee is comprised of 15 community members who live, work, play, go to school, or worship in the city of Portland. They're tasked with advising City Council, Chief Administrative Officer, and City Transition Team on the Community Education and Engagement Plan and the Transition Plan for the 2022 voter-approved Charter Amendment. Today, I'm seeking council approval of 15 members to serve on the Government Transition Advisory Committee, or GTAC. In addition, I'm recommending the appointment of four alternate members and two reserve alternate members to ensure that the committee has the capacity necessary to complete its work within our limited time span for implementation. I want to thank the many Portlanders who stepped up to offer to serve the city. I also want to thank our incredible charter transition team, including Julia, who's with us here today, my staff, and my council colleagues for continuing to work with my office and forming this list of what I believe are exceptional appointees. With that, I'll turn this over to Julia Meyer, the Community Participation and Engagement Manager for the Charter Transition within the Office of Management and Finance, to introduce our Government Transition Advisory Committee nominees. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Mayor.
That was a mouthful. I love to see your business cards.
Yes, it's a lot. Thank you so much. It's so good to be here. I think the Clerk is going to share our presentation. It's 10 or so minutes. I am Julia Meyer. I see her pronouns. I'm one of the members of the Charter Transition Team. And like the mayor, I also really want to begin by thanking all of the people who applied to serve on this advisory committee. Charter review and transition implementation are not possible without volunteers. So, and the process to get here, to the appointment, involved many folks across the city. So I really want to start by thanking folks at the Office of Community and Civic Life. Everyone, all council offices participated, particularly Haley Blondesley from the mayor's office, and my coworkers on the Charter Transition Advisory Team. So, over the last couple of years, I was also staff for Charter Review itself. And Charter Review required engaging Portlanders across neighborhoods, backgrounds, and experiences. Next slide, please. So last summer, the Charter Commission voted to advance a ballot measure for Portlanders' consideration on the November 2022 ballot. Portlanders passed ballot measure 26228, which changed our government in significant ways. First, allowing voters to rank candidates in order of their preference using ranked choice voting. Second, creating four new geographic districts with three counselors elected to represent each district for an expanded 12-member city council. And third, replacing the commission form of government with a mayor-council form of government, where city council will set policy, and a mayor elected citywide will run the city's day-to-day operations with the help of a professional city administrator. That is a lot of big change. Next slide, please. And we have about a year and eight months to get it done. This slide is small writing. I apologize. But it really just shows even some of the milestones that we need to hit so that in November 2024, we have our first district-based elections using ranked choice voting. And on January 1st, 2025, we have a council and mayor entering into a new form of government. So the day after the election, I know that the mayor, you issued a video statement. And it pointed out a couple of things that I think are important to keep in mind. One, yes, voters approved a lot of charter amendments, but city council has a lot of decisions to make between now and January 1st, 2025. Right? The charter doesn't have everything in it. And that the mayor also announced on that day the creation of advisory body to help council, to help folks within the city make those decisions along the way, and to engage Portlanders in that conversation. So, next slide, please. So just like Charter Review, the transition process also requires deep community education and engagement. And I know that the city is committed to a community-driven process. And part of that commitment is the creation of this body, the Government Transition Advisory Committee. And community members who live, work, play, go to school, or worship in the city are eligible to serve on this body. The committee's job is to be the main public engagement body for the transition. Like the mayor said, it's a 15-member body appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The committee will begin meeting next month, and they're going to serve two-year terms. So a little past that January 1st, 2025 date to do some evaluation and hopefully future recommendation-making. And the role of the body, like I said, is really to advise all of you, to advise the Chief Administrative Officer, and to advise folks like me who spend their days working to support the transition implementation. Their job is to maintain that open and consistent communication with Portlanders across the process, and to bring back what they hear to all of you so that you can consider it in the decisions you all need to make throughout the transition. So, next slide, please. So we had an open application process. We received 79 applications in response. And there were, as in all things transition-related, more qualified applicants than there were spots. And so I do want to take this moment just to remind everyone who might be watching or listening that service on this body is not the only way to engage in the transition, and that we want to hear from folks, and we want to plug people in. So if anyone is interested in participating, in volunteering in some way in the transition, you can reach out to the transition team. So again, I really want to appreciate everyone who applied. It's a substantial application. It takes time. So, thank you. So applicants were then evaluated on a selection criteria, and those include the following. So one, skills, knowledge, and lived experience that will help the committee do its work. Two, commitment to the city's core values. Three, interest and experience in the government transition.
Next slide, please.
Four, experience working on issues that impact Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, as well as communities historically left out of city hall decision-making. Five, ability to support the community engagement efforts of the committee. Six, a willingness to work on what we think will be a highly visible public body. And finally, just the ability to commit the time required. So the mayor and council offices then selected 15 members, four alternates and two reserve alternates. And similar to the Independent District Commission that you all appointed, we are recommending alternates and reserve alternates, like the mayor mentioned in his opening remarks. And there's really a couple of reasons for it. One is that there's a short timeline for the transition, and having vacancies or having these bodies not working at their full capacity makes the work a lot more challenging. But two, and I personally, this one is maybe my favorite, is that the more people, the more connections, right? The more people, the more brains. And so part of this body's job is community engagement. So having alternates sit at the same table, bring their relationships and their experiences, is a positive for a body like this. Next slide, please. So, now I get the fun part of introducing you to the members. I'm going to start with the 15 members and then do the alternates and reserve alternates. I am going to go through them pretty quickly. Fuller bio statements of interest are in your council information. And when you formally appoint folks, we will put all of this information on the transition website for folks to spend a little bit more time with. Next slide. All right. David. David is a certified alcohol and drug substance abuse counselor, providing care to clients in treatment in the Portland metro area. He advocates for people impacted by mental health and substance use to have a voice in policies and regulations that impact them. Next slide, please. Bill. Bill brings over 25 years of local governmental experience, having served in a chief operating office or chief of staff capacity for two county chairs, two Portland superintendents, and one president of Mount Hood Community College. Next slide, please. This is Mani. Mani is the R E D F, which is the Roberts Enterprise Development Fund, Head of Policy, where she promotes employment, social enterprise growth, and employee earning power through the development and execution of federal, state, and local public policy. Next slide, please. This is Lori. Lori retired from Intel after 21 years with the company. She's an engineer who values data, measurement systems, efficient process, and accountability. Next slide, please. This is Jo, who is looking a bit fuzzy. Jo recently retired after a 35-year career as a consultant helping organizations and their leaders make critical decisions, work together more effectively, and make a positive difference in their communities. Next slide, please. This is Juliette. Juliette is a former city manager and served as president of the Northwest District Association and a board member of Neighbors West Northwest Coalition. Next slide, please. Zach. Zach is a policy scientist with a climate impacts group at the University of Washington, and previously served as a policy advisor to Mayor Wheeler. Next slide, please. This is Destiny. Destiny has a very long title. She is the bilingual coordinated enrollment project manager for the Early Learning Multnomah Preschool Promise Program. And she previously served as a telecounselor at Portland State University and a college advocate mentor with Portland Public Schools. Next slide, please. This is Elizabeth. Elizabeth is the Executive Director of Westside Economic Alliance and founder and principal of Strategic Partnering Group, a public affairs consulting firm. She has 20 years of policy and political experience in Oregon, including serving as chief of staff to elected officials in both Multnomah and Washington counties. Next slide, please. This is Mabi. Mabi has 25 years of experience in real estate and mortgage lending. She serves as a Realtor partner with the Portland Community Reinvestment Initiative and serves the Realtor Advocacy Committee with Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors. Next slide, please. Fred. Fred retired in 2006 as Campaign Finance Manager for the Oregon Secretary of State's Office Elections Division. He held various government positions in Oregon over a 32-year period, advising state and local elected and appointed officials. He currently serves on the Board of the Oregon State Capitol Foundation. Next slide, please. This is Terrence. Terrence is the Senior Director of Real Estate and Facilities at Standard Insurance Company. He also serves on the Board of Downtown Clean and Safe and the Board of Portland Business Alliance. Next slide, please. Amy. Amy is an experienced political and public affairs professional and currently works as the Manager of Communications and Education for Great Place to Work, a global authority on workplace culture. Next slide, please. This is Juanita. Juanita retired as the Executive Director of the San Francisco State University Head Start, and before that worked for 14 years as the Oregon Child Development Coalition's Executive Director. She currently serves on the Oregon State AARP Diversity Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. This is the final of the first kind of 15 members. This is Amy. Amy is the Senior Vice President of Strategy for a food and agriculture firm. She has worked for large organizations and trade associations and is an experienced marketing strategist. Next slide, please. This is very enjoyable. Thank you. It's an incredible group of people. So now I'm just going to share the four folks who are the alternate member nominees. And as a reminder, alternates will participate in all activities of the committee. I know you talked about this with the Independent District Commission, so very similar. They are just non-voting members, and they would be first in line to move into a full committee membership position if one of those 15 folks is unable to fill their full two-year terms. So, next slide, please. All on one slide here. So Leah is the owner of Banter Consulting and Creative, where she provides equity-centered nonprofit and small business strategy, organizational development, and participatory facilitation services. She previously owned a local bike shop. Jane wrapped up her working life as the Executive Director of Lansu Chinese Garden, and before that worked at the Port of Portland. Jose currently serves as the co-chair of the Powellhurst Gilbert Neighborhood Association and is an elected precinct committee person of the Multnomah County Democratic Party. And Terry is an environmental activist and Maryland attorney who practiced civil and environmental law. When Baltimore was considering charter changes in 2001, he was appointed to its study commission to consider the size and structure of Baltimore City Council. Next slide, please. So finally, there's going to be two reserve alternate members. So these are folks who don't have the same kind of maybe responsibility to engage in all the committee meetings like the primary alternates, but they will stay informed of the committee's work. And they would be first in line to move into the alternate member role if an alternate member moves into a full membership role. So, next slide, please. Brian is a Finance and Strategy Director who has worked across engineering, operations, change management, and finance. He also started a small business. William or Bill completed a legal career as an environmental attorney with Bonneville Power with Bonneville Power Administration and currently volunteers with the Oregon AARP and a couple of local nonprofits. So again, really, I appreciate the mayor's office, council, for this group of folks, everyone who applied to serve, everyone who's willing to serve. It's an incredible group of folks. And just, I have one more slide for you to close us out. So again, just as a reminder, after you appoint folks, they'll meet for the first time next month. They'll serve two-year terms until March of 2025. And, you know, I would just say, again, their primary role is advisory, right? They're here to help. They're here to help you. They're here to help the chief administrative officer. They're here to help folks like me who work all the time on the best implementation of this transition that we can do, right? So I know that I will say, I want to hear from you. And I imagine these folks want to hear from you. What are those? You saw that earlier slide, right? With all these decision points, right? That you all need to make in the next, you know, year and eight months or so. What are those points? What are those moments across the transition that you would like to hear from folks? That you would like the advice of all these folks I just introduced to you? Or you want these folks to go and talk to other people to provide you input to make the most informed decisions you can, right? So we're really here in service to you, hopefully in service to the city more broadly in this transition work. And I really look forward to working with all of your offices, and I think this committee will as well. So there is a webpage on this slide, portland.gov/transition/advisory, where community members can follow along. They can track the committee's work. They can see the public meetings. They can sign up to get updates about the work, to come testify before this body or just submit any kind of public comment that they want. So that completes my presentation. Thank you so much for the time, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Colleagues, any questions? Do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
This is a report. Please call the roll.
Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion?
Oh, yes, sorry. Can somebody make a motion? Someone accept the report. Renee, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Map seconds. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and thank you, Julia Meyer, for bringing these names for our consideration, for your excellent work on this significant project. This is a really, really impressive and excellent group of nominees. They're very sector and experience diverse, and I'm really excited for their service. We're at a historic moment for the city, and I'm really grateful that this committee will help steward us with equity, transparency, and good government at the forefront of the work. Thank you to the nominees for stepping up to serve our city and for devoting all your time. It's a time-intensive and high-stakes tasks that you're undertaking. So please just know how much we all deeply appreciate your service, and we're here to engage and also to support you in this important work. So once again, Julia, mayor, and mayor's team, great work here, and I'm happy to vote aye.
Brian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you, Julia. That was a great report. I want to underscore just how talented, the diverse range of experiences and lived experiences of that group. And I remember seeing the big list. I'm glad you called out how many people are qualified that aren't able to serve in this capacity. But you gave them an opening on how to stay active. I just want to say thank you to the people who signed up. You're really going to be putting in a lot of hours for the city of Portland. So thanks for that act of love. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Excited by the prospects here on this very important work. I vote aye.
Maps.
I'd like to thank the mayor and Julia for today's presentation, and I'd like to thank these volunteers for agreeing to serve on this important committee. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Court's accepted. The appointments are approved. Great team. Thank you. Colleagues, I've had a little bit of a sidebar with Commissioner Rubio. With her forbearance, we will do the four-fifths item first. That's item number 246. Then we'll go to her item immediately after. She has a commitment on behalf of the city council, so she'll probably just have time to introduce it and then go. But that's the way these things are stacked at the moment. So we'll do 246. It's already been read. This is the ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with Portland City Laborers. I've already read my introduction. We now have Ron Zito. And Ron, we're a little time compressed today due to some quorum issues, so if you could be thoughtful about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and city commissioners. I will be brief. My name is Ron Zito. I am the director of employee and labor relations within the city's Bureau of Human Resources. I thank you for your time today on this important emergency ordinance. What we have before us is a successor contract that delivers a new four-year agreement for over 600 workers in a variety of critical roles and positions across seven different city bureaus. There are a number of improvements I could go over in this comment, in this contract, but to be brief, I would say it benefits both the city and Lyuna members. It brings wage rates above comparators in many classifications. It increases hours for seasonal park rangers, many other things, just to name a few. But more than any single improvement, this agreement provides evidence of compromise and collaboration. It ended a three-day strike that was stressful for everyone involved, including those who participated and those who remained in the workplace. So just some brief thanks. I want to share appreciation for Lyuna and local 483 labor leaders for their commitment to their members and the compromise that culminated in this tentative agreement. I also want to thank my fellow city colleagues who kept critical services running, who ensured we kept our commitments to our community. And finally, I want to thank all of the Portland City laborers who do this vital work every day. So with that, thank you, mayor and city commissioners. I would respectfully ask for your support in approving this ordinance, and we can move forward with implementing its commitments.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have public testimony on this item?
We do. First up is Ryan Sotomayor.
How many folks do we have?
Two people.
Very good. Thank you.
First up is Ryan Sotomayor.
Welcome.
Looks like they were planning to join us virtually, and they haven't arrived.
No, I think it's just PCL.
So we'll go to Ben Nelson.
Welcome, Ben.
They were planning to join in person, and I don't think they're here either.
Very good. It's an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thanks to Mayor Wheeler, the Labor Relations Team, Portland City Laborers, for all the work that it's taken to get us to this point. I appreciate the journey to get here. It's been a long one, but I'm happy that we have this agreement before us. I vote aye.
Brian.
Yes, very delighted to be here. Solution that works for everyone. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Thank you, Portland City Laborers. Thank you, Ron and Labor Relations. I know this was a really, really challenging negotiation. I'm glad that there was an amicable compromise between the parties. We value our employees. We appreciate that we were able to avoid further dissent amongst us. We appreciate the partnership. I vote aye, and the ordinance is accepted. It's adopted. Thank you. We'll go back to Commissioner Rubio's item. Commissioner Rubio's item is already open. This is a report to accept the state of housing in Portland 2022 report. I interrupted you, Commissioner. Why don't you read it again, starting from the top?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The Portland Housing Bureau has been publishing an annual housing report for the last eight years. The report has provided local leaders and policymakers with the most comprehensive resource on housing and affordability in our city, offering us critical insights into what the housing market is serving and who is being left behind. As you will hear from the presentation today, housing affordability remains a challenge for most Portlanders as rent and home sale prices have continued to climb and outpace incomes. A detailed look at the recent population and housing data signals that Portland is in a challenging period of housing affordability for both homeowners and renters. Now I'd like to introduce the team from the Portland Housing Bureau, interim director Molly Rogers, data analytics and systems manager Antoinette Pietka, and Bimal Rajbandari, analyst and project manager, to kick off our presentation.
Great. Well, good morning, mayor and commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers. I'm the interim director of the Portland Housing Bureau. Can you pull up the slide deck? Great. Next slide. Great. The Portland Housing Bureau has been publishing this report for the last eight years. We generate a lot of data in the fall, and we publish in the spring. So this is very timely for us, especially as housing has become a very critical affordability issue around the same time as the state of emergency was established. Next slide. The annual state of housing report is divided into five sections. It uses a combination of American community survey data, private market data, and city program data to paint a picture of housing in Portland. Next slide. The report also provides data for the city as a whole and as well as the 24 individual neighborhood analysis areas. Next slide. And as Commissioner Rubio already introduced, this year's report comes at a critical time in Portland's housing landscape. While Portland grew in population, wealth, median age, and diversity over the past five years, income remains uneven across the board with persistent disparities by housing tenure and race and ethnicity. Affordability continues to be the biggest challenge in Portland's housing markets with rising rents, decreasing vacancy rates, and rapidly rising home sale values and prices. While the city continues to grapple with the lingering effects of the pandemic, the city is facing a perfect storm of market conditions that are making housing even less affordable, including rising inflation and interest rates. All right, Ben.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bimal Rajbandari. I'm a data analyst with the Portland Housing Bureau. And today, at this point, I would like to present some data.
Next slide, Ben.
Oh, next slide, please. Thank you. So at this point, I would like to present some data showing current housing market, demographic changes, and some affordability analysis results. The chart before you shows the person change in rent per year. The blue line in the chart represents person change in rent by year and quarter. The dotted orange line represents the average person change from the last 10 years. In 2022, the average overall asking rent increased by 3.7% from the previous year. The 2020s average rent was $1,614 per month, which is $58 higher than 2021. And this is a smaller increase than from 2020 to 2021, when the average rent increased by 6.1%. So if you look at the right side of the graph, you'll see that in 2022, the rent growth is slowing. Next slide, please. On the chart before you shows vacancy rates per year for the last 10 years. The dotted blue line represents the city of Portland. The dotted green line represents the central city, and the dotted orange line, the East Portland. On average, the vacancy rate has decreased from 6.1% in 2021 to 6% in 2022. So the vacancy rate was higher for the studios and one-bedrooms, and it was a little bit lower for the two- and three-bedroom units. And if you look at the graph, and you will see that the vacancy rates were higher in the central city and lower in the East Portland than the average vacancy rate in the city overall. So during the imminent pandemic time from 2021, you see that the vacancy rates were really high for central city as well as for the Portland as a whole. And next slide, please. So the chart before you shows asking rents for the past 10 years. Again, the dotted blue line is for the city of Portland. Green line represents the central city, and the dotted orange line, East Portland. And nearly all the neighborhoods saw increases in the average rent. And the following neighborhoods saw the smallest increase in average rents, less than 3% for Central City, Interstate Corridor, and West Portland. By contrast, Pleasant Valley experienced the largest rent increase with an increase of 10%. So because of lack of time, so I'm trying to be a little bit quicker in the presentation. So, next slide, please. The chart before you shows the change in residential median home sales price by housing types for the past eight years. So housing types we have looked at is condo, detached, and attached. So between 2016 and 2021, the median home sales price citywide increased 17% or over $77,900 to reach $525,000 in 2021. So overall, the detached units were much more higher compared to the condo or attached, and it's even higher compared to the city average. Four neighborhoods in East Portland, 122nd Division, Sentinel Glen Fair, Gateway, and Park Rose, saw the most significant increases in the median home sales price, close to 30% or more. Next slide, please. Our next two slides are about just basically population and the income. Portland's population increased by more than 38,000 individuals, 6.2% from 2015 and 2020, with an estimated population of 650,300 individuals as of 2020. So if you look at the graph on the right side, you'll see that the increases in population has been significant among the city's wide Asian and Hispanic Latinx population. Additionally, there was a 36% increase among those who identified as belonging to two or more races. And if you look at the map on the left, you will see that most of the growth happened in Central City, North-North East Portland, and closer Southeast Portland. And next slide, please. So briefly on household income here. Portland's median household income went up drastically by 13,022% between 2015 and 2022. Even though the income rose very significantly, but not for all racial and ethnic groups, the income disparity still persisted. So median income increased significantly for white householders and saw some increase for Hawaiian Pacific Islander, Hispanic Latinx, and Native American households as well. And more. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the household income from a different, looking at it from a gender side. The differences in Portland's homeowners and rented households by income and race are again illustrated in this graph of median income. Just to get oriented with this table, the numbers on the top are the bands of income. Think of it as an income bucket. The numbers on the side are the number of households that are in those income bands. But we have on the top the homeowners and on the bottom the renters. Putting them together, you can see how the proportion of renters and homeowners play out depending on how much income you have. So most of the homeowners tend to be on a higher income level, whereas the renters tend to be more skewed to the left. And also, a lot of renters tend to be people of color. In Portland, 87% of the households are renters. 53% are homeowners. The median income for homeowners' household is $103,317, and for rented households, less than half at $49,643. And as we have alluded before, the household median income differs sharply by race and ethnicity as well. And next slide, please. So two slides on the permits at production level in the city of Portland. One thing we have to realize that housing production lagged during the years of the Great Recession from 2009 to 2012, and again during the pandemic in 2020. However, in 2021, the city of Portland still issued 4,509 permits for multifamily units throughout the city. And similar to previous years, multifamily permitting continues to be concentrated in Central City, South Portland, Markham Hill, and Interstate. And multifamily permits in these neighborhoods account for nearly 54% of all multifamily permits. Next slide, please. And this is a slide looking at the single-family permits and production in Portland and also by neighborhood as shown in the map. The single-family permits and production have remained consistent in recent years. In 2021, there were 2,800 permits issued, and most of these single-family housing units were primarily focused in the Lenz, Foster, Pleasant Valley, and St. John's neighborhood. Next, we looked at rental and homeownership affordability, just to see which areas of the city are affordable to people of different income level and different race and ethnicity.
Are you on the next slide?
Sorry, next slide, please. The rental affordability section of the state of housing report shows how rental affordability varies among different populations in Portland. On average, On average, a household could afford a rental unit in green on the map without becoming cost burden and spending more than 30% of their monthly income and rent, and this doesn't include utilities. And those in the light blue are the areas which could be considered not affordably. So for this example, we looked at the two-bedroom affordability only. Strikingly, there are no neighborhoods affordable to, affordable to average black householders and very few affordable, neighborhood affordable to Latinx and Native American households in Portland. Now, we're talking about average householders with a median income. In addition to the race and ethnicity, there are some, certain groups are also completely priced out, like people with 0 to 30% AMI households, and seniors, and also, a single mother households. And next, we looked at the homeownership affordability. The homeownership. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Thank you. The homeownership affordability section of the State of Housing Report shows how homeownership affordability varies among different populations in Portland. On average, a household could afford home in green, as you see in this map, without becoming cost burden and spending more than 30% of their monthly income housing. And those, again, in the light blue could be considered not affordably. And strikingly, and the scenario is much more bleaker for homeownership, there are no neighborhoods affordable to average black, Latinx, and Native American households in Portland. And very few neighborhoods become affordable to Pacific Islander and Asian households. So you can see the disparities in affordability as swinging up. And for all the study areas, it's more than, there are 24, 24 study areas. Out of 24 study areas, 21 study areas has a median home sale, sale value of more than $400,000. So affordability is the question. At this point, I'd like to turn to Molly, our director, Molly Rogers.
Thank you, Bimal.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. That was a very sobering report, Bimal. And it, we can at least be able to highlight some key areas where we have made crossroads, some inroads. And that is really, really tied to the level of investments the Portland Housing Bureau has been able to make in having an affordable housing pipeline. Since the housing emergency was declared in 2015, the Portland Housing Bureau has opened or, and preserved more than 4,300 units of affordable housing, serving and providing homes for an estimated 8,720 Portlanders. In addition, we have 3,400 units in our Portland Housing Bureau's pipeline. And that was going to provide another, going to provide another 300, 6,300 homes for Portlanders with safe, staple, high quality that they can afford for the next several years. Next slide. Part of this strategy is our Inclusionary Housing Program. Since 2017, when it was passed, nearly 1,000 affordable units has been created or will be created through the private market because of this program. And there are different stages of where they are in the permitting, but it shows that there is a way to do it all over the city. And last slide. And so now, more than ever, we do need accurate information of the state of our city to solve the complex challenges that we face. That's why this annual report is just step one. And this year, we will be digging deeper in coordination with PHB's other service area bureaus. I want to also make, acknowledge, and thank Tom Armstrong from the Portland, for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. The work that we will be doing will be aligned with the next set of reports that will look at the overarching cost drivers of housing, the local cost drivers compared to other cities, the performance of the inclusionary housing policy, the types of housing that we need, and developing a housing production strategy. We'll be looking forward to updating you and all those future analyses and reports so we can have a robust housing market again. Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions at this point? Commissioner Maps?
I have a, I have a quick one. Number one, thank you for this presentation and the important work that you do, especially at this moment in time. I believe the Housing Bureau is working on a study slash evaluation of inclusionary housing. Is that correct? And if it, I'm seeing heads nod, which I'm glad to hear. Do we know when that report is going to reach council?
The, the report itself is, was meant to support a panel of experts that Commissioner Ryan convened and is through, it's called BA, Bay Area Economics Consulting. They're also the consultants to, that's looking at the cost drivers of building housing. So we were able to align their expertise and have some cost efficiencies in having two scopes of work. So right now, we're actually doing the work to align those two studies so we have, so we can look at the bigger macro issues that are facing Portland and how we build housing, and then we can hone in on inclusionary housing. That alignment is actually extending the amount of time that the panel will be convened for an extra two more meetings. So we're hoping to conclude that work in the summertime. And then we will come to council with a series of recommendations to present related to the Inclusionary Housing Program.
Okay. I'm not sure if I tracked all that. So somewhere out there, there is a, what I would think of as a study of inclusionary housing that has been completed, but it's still being kind of traded back and forth between committees. Is that where we're at?
It's, it's one committee, but we're looking at two different scopes of work. And we're looking at the cost drivers now. And then we'll start looking at the prototypes specific to inclusionary housing in the next couple of months.
I'm still kind of foggy on the rental show on this. I'll, I'll just say, for my entire time that I've been here, housing has been a, frankly, in crisis. And I think, I feel like we've been promised a valuation of the Inclusionary Housing Program. I'm eager to see that. And certainly, in my closing arguments, I'm going to suggest that we, this council hold a work session on housing needs here in Portland. I think it's time that we revisit this space. Thank you.
Very good. Any further?
I just have a couple of comments. And I'm glad you brought up the study. I know that we are trying to make it pencil out and increase productivity and supply. So there was a lot of tension last I was, last I tuned in, as there should be. The people we brought together are the right people. I was looking at your data, I was thinking about if you overlaid the affordable housing that we now have in the marketplace, thanks to the success of the bond, and then we could look at how much affordable housing we then have for rentals. Does that make sense? So right now, we decouple it. So we have, you make the case very well. And it's very sobering, not surprising, that there's not a lot of affordable housing for most Portlanders. Then we overlay it, we could overlay it with the productivity that we've had with affordable housing and then see how that changes the landscape. That makes the case for why we need to make more affordable housing units. Now, does that make a little bit more sense? So you could take the data and overlay it. That'd be helpful, I think. That's all. I just wanted to make sure I got that point out. Thanks.
Thank you. Good. Do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Commissioner Ryan moves. Commissioner Maps?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Maps. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Oh, it's good to see you, Molly. Great report. Totally sobering and depressing, and yet not surprising. And also, it was full of really good data. So I think you're making the case in a very succinct way. I vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank the panel, Commissioner Rubio, and the Housing Bureau for this report. It does contain some sobering information. Colleagues, I think this data is so sobering that we really should have a work session on this policy space in this calendar year. I will reach out to Commissioner Rubio to see if we can get that on the calendar. But in the meantime, I very much do appreciate the, the hard data that's in this report, and I appreciate the important work that the Housing Bureau does. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I am very happy to accept this report. And Commissioner Maps, I think that sounds like a good idea. Obviously, this is an issue that's critically important. It overlays a lot of the work that we're currently doing in the partnerships we have with Multnomah County and the state, and indeed, the federal government. So I appreciate, as always, the update. I'm not surprised by the conclusions. They continue to, we have a housing shortage, and we know it. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And that's the work that the council has been undertaking and, and the new governor and the new county chair. And I look forward to figuring out more ways that we can be supportive of those efforts and help lead them. I vote aye. The report's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go back to the beginning of the regular agenda. Does, does anybody need a break? I've just been powering through.
I do, actually.
Why don't we do this? We've, since we need all three of us here, why don't we take a 10-minute break? I'm sure other people wouldn't mind that either. It's 11:45. We'll come back at 11:55. We have one procurement. You know, I'm going to move the resolution forward, the Police Accountability Commission. I think we've had people waiting here. So if you don't mind, I'll tackle that when we come back. And, actually, no, I'm going to do 241 first when we come back. That's the solicitation by the police bureau. We'll do the Accountability Commission second, 240. We'll go then to 238, third. Do 242 last, if that works for people. And then just take it in, in order. Yeah, we have a second reading, and then 245 last. Good.
Okay.
Good. Thanks. We're in recess. Good. Thanks. We're in recess.
... to authorize the police bureau to produce, I'm sorry, to procure unmanned aircraft systems, otherwise known as drones. Joining us to present are Sergeant James DeFrain, Sergeant Brian Sweeney, and Catherine Lindsay. Thank you for that. Also present are Commander Chris Jovick and Derek Foxworth. Sergeant DeFrain, I hand it over to you. Thank you for being here today and thank you for your patience. I, I know you've been waiting here a long time and we appreciate it.
Mayor, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Uh, may I read the title?
Well, that would be a novel idea, wouldn't it? Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Item 241. Authorized Competitive Solicitation and Purchase of Unmanned Aircraft Systems for Use by Portland Police Bureau Not to Exceed $80,000.
Then everything I said. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, can we bring up the presentation? And I'll give a little bit of a preamble. So, good morning. My name is Jim DeFrain and I am the team leader for the Portland Metro Explosive Disposal Unit. With me today is Sergeant Brian Sweeney from our air support unit and Catherine Lindsay from our business services group. As you may know, the police bureau has been working toward a small unmanned aerial system, or SUAS, program for close to five years. These tools have been proven throughout the nation to efficiently document complex scenes and enhance safety by providing critical information from a safe location. In early 2020, our traffic division purchased small UASs for the purposes of crash scene reconstruction. That program was tabled prior to rollout as traffic division staffing was reduced. In December of 2020, city council passed council resolution 37520. This resolution enacted inventory controls and reporting requirements for certain PPB equipment. It also established a list of prohibited and controlled items that require council approval to purchase. One of those items on the controlled list was small unmanned aerial systems. Our goal today is to gain council approval to purchase needed UAS equipment. If approved, we will begin a one-year pilot project to gauge the effectiveness of these tools at de-escalating police use of force, reducing time spent on major crash scenes, and lessening the impact to the community from road closures and critical incidents. Over the last two years, we have presented or offered to present this pilot project to every commissioner's office for review. At Commissioner Rubio's recommendation, we presented this project to Smart City PDX and the Office of Equity and Human Rights. Smart City PDX completed a privacy impact and risk assessment, ranking this program as a medium-risk worst-case scenario. They provided risk mitigation suggestions which have informed our standard operating procedures. Currently, most public safety agencies surrounding Portland have active SUAS programs. Multiple city bureaus can benefit from this technology. Our own fire bureau borrowed pilots and UASs from the Scapus Fire Department to document the Korean church arson in January. To that end, the police bureau has utilized the services of the Gresham Police Department a small number of times during events where an armed subject posed a significant threat to our community. These activations were approved by the commander of the PPB Specialized Resource Division. Each one of these incidents were resolved without injury to police or suspects. In a few, the information provided by the UAS prevented the need for officers to directly confront armed suspects, allowing for a safe resolution for all involved. We strongly believe getting this pilot project underway will show immediately, immediate results in safety and efficiency. We are asking for approval to spend approximately $80,000 from existing police bureau budget on UAS equipment. The bureau has set aside funding for this project in this fiscal year. We are asking for no additional funds. Now, I'd like to spend a few minutes briefing you on our equipment and the use cases for this tool. Next slide, please. Small unmanned aerial systems, or SUASs, are commonly referred to as drones. One potential problem with that term is that it means different things to different people. The fact is, most of the equipment needed for this project can be purchased for recreational use. They do not have facial recognition or any ability to carry anything heavier than a cellphone. They have extremely limited flight time and are limited to close line-of-sight flying. At their core, SUASs are simply remote cameras that allow us to safely gather information and document evidence in a way we are unable to now. The photos below are representations of the types of equipment our program would have, as well as how they would be clearly marked as bureau property. Next slide, please. The ability of this tool to reduce time, expense, and public inconvenience cannot be underestimated. This slide from the Oregon Department of Transportation shows the effects on vehicle delay hours and associated costs of significant closures. On December 6th, 2021, I-5 was closed for nearly seven hours for a critical police investigation. ODOT estimates a delay cost to the economy of $1.4 million and nearly 50,000 hours of vehicle delay. During the closure, time spent documenting the scene was just over two hours. A conservative estimate for SUAS processing of the scene is about 30 minutes. Opening the highway 90 minutes faster reduces over $300,000 in delay cost and 10,000 hours of vehicle delay. This statistic does not take into account the significant police resources required to manage that scene, rendering them unavailable to service other calls throughout the city. Next slide, please. This slide contains a list of what we see as our immediate mission set for this program. Our intent is to start very, very small, with a defined list of operational uses during our pilot project. Upon completion of the pilot, we will gather information on additional use cases and present those as recommended. Next slide, please. Conversely, we have clearly identified prohibited uses of this technology, as well as many other safeguards in our investigative branch SUAS standard operating procedures. As you can see, police bureau members are specifically restricted from using this technology for crowd control events or mass surveillance, as well as most other situations that lend themselves to public concern. This direction is provided via a set of standard operating procedures that address policy, training, privacy, marking and identification, and reporting. This SOP is guided by, but more restrictive than, Oregon state law on UAS use. Next slide, please. Objectively evaluating this pilot project will require data and transparency. This slide contains a draft mock-up of the internal dashboard that will be updated after each use of our SUAS. Each operational flight will be reported on, and additional data points added as needed to provide a complete picture of our project's value. Additionally, on the PPB Public Facing webpage, we will include a link to our equipment types, project scope, standard operating procedures, and a summary of operational use, including call type, time and date, and neighborhood. Next slide, please. I'd like to present, to present a few use cases for this technology. These cases show in detail the types of events our SUAS operators would respond to. The first is the Troutdale Safeway roof collapse during the winter storm in 2021. First responders arrived and were unable to verify there were no potential victims inside the store. Due to the hazard presented by the structure, technicians with the Metro Explosive Disposal Unit and UAS operators from the Gresham Police Department responded and immediately deployed robots and small UASs, which entered and searched the building for additional victims. Next slide, please. Case number two is from a crash processed by the Oregon State Police, which was processed both with our current scene scanner, which is called a Pharaoh, as well as with an SUAS. The photos on the left show the Pharaoh, while the SUAS scene is on the right. The processing time, as you can see, with the Pharaoh, was approximately three hours and 24 minutes, while the same work with a better end product took about 30 minutes with the SUAS. Next slide, please. This next event, which occurred in November 2021, was really a catalyst for moving this project forward. This case is not resolved at this time, so I will not show pictures or videos from the scene. This event began with a female at this location calling in saying she was being held hostage by her boyfriend who was armed. When officers arrived, the suspect fired multiple times at them through the door. Over the next several hours, the suspect fired dozens of rounds at Portland police, some of which entered neighboring apartments through the walls. This apartment was on the fourth floor of a complex with an external stairway that offered no cover from the suspect's gunfire. We knew that the suspect had his girlfriend as a hostage, and we had information that she was likely injured. Any attempts to move closer to this location were met with gunfire. All attempts at negotiation were rejected. Given these circumstances, Deputy Chief Frome authorized the use of the Gresham Police SUAS, which within minutes was able to look into the high windows and observe both the suspect and the victim, who appeared deceased. This suspect was so affected by the spotlight from the hovering drone, he barricaded himself inside a small room, which allowed the tactical team to enter and take him into custody with no further injury. As a police agency, sometimes you deal with an incident like this, where an innocent victim is likely badly injured and being held against their will by an armed suspect. And once you've tried all the tools at your disposal, sometimes your only resolution is to send city of Portland employees into that apartment under gunfire to rescue that innocent victim. In a critical incident such as this, decision-making is fueled by information. Those decisions can have life-or-death consequences, and to not use every available tool to gather that information is a disservice to the community, the victims, and our officers. The use of the Gresham UAS that night provided information, although tragic, that allowed the event to slow down and avoid what would have likely resulted in additional loss of life or significant injury to our employees or the suspect. Next slide, please. Uh, this will be the video, and I'll give a little preamble to it, but... Uh, I'm going to show a short video of a UAS activation that took place in Chula Vista, California. I believe this video is a good example of one way this tool can be used to reduce potential for force and improve police response. A caller reported a subject possibly waving around a gun in public. Uh, this video is about a minute and a half long, and I'll play it for you now. So, many of you have taken ride-alongs, and you know that when officers are dispatched to these calls, we have very little information outside of what the caller provides. And that can be significantly different than what we encounter upon arrival. In this case, the public location, a language barrier, and possible mental health or drug influence add complexity, and can lead to the type of tragic outcome we see on the news all too often. The information provided by the UAS allowed those officers to approach in a much more relaxed manner. No guns drawn, no force used, and the community disruption was kept to a minimum. You often hear the term "de-escalation" used regarding police interventions. The police bureau provides significant training and holds the expectation that officers will attempt to de-escalate whenever possible. But there is no one magic trick for police to get non-compliant, fleeing, armed suspects to peacefully surrender. Often, these suspects flee into residential neighborhoods or the yard of an unknowing community member. Twice last month, armed subjects running from Portland Police broke into occupied homes. The presence of this tool can provide vital information on suspect actions, behaviors, and levels of compliance without personnel having to approach. This information feeds the decision-making of our incident commanders and can provide time, distance, and options. And last slide, please. Finally, this slide shows a summary and recommendations on our timeline for this project. If these estimates seem short, it's because we've been working toward this for years. While technology is ever-changing, most of the planning, operating procedures, and equipment needs have already been established. That's all I have for you today. I can try to answer any questions that you have on the operational level. Uh, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Very good. Thank you for the report and the multimedia presentation. That was great. Colleagues, any questions?
I might have some if there's after, uh, public testimony.
Do we have public testimony?
We have one individual signed up, Mark Porras.
All right. We'll hear from Mark. Three minutes. Mark, please, if you could just state your name for the record.
Uh, yep. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Mark Porras. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. Uh, we're deeply concerned about this proposal to spend $80,000 on police surveillance drones. Just last month, the city passed a resolution requiring that scrutiny be given to surveillance technologies to ensure they will not desperately impact certain populations and that they will not intrude on people's privacy. Uh, maybe it's our bad for not realizing that policy put the review solely into the hands of Smart City PDX, instead of requiring a public conversation. Uh, but the council should know better than to introduce new technologies such as gunshot detection and surveillance drones, without first hashing out whether they should be adopted. We do not want to see PBB obtain drones saying, "Trust us, this is only for accident investigations and hostage situations," only to find ourselves down the line with robot-involved shootings of people who may or may not be in mental health crisis.
Very good. Thank you. Mark, can you turn off your camera? Your audio's not working. If you could turn off the camera, we might be able to hear the last bit there.
Yep. Okay, let me just finish it up here. We don't want to see PBB obtain drones saying, "Trust us, this is only for accident investigations and hostage situations," only to find ourselves down the line with robot-involved shootings of people who may or may not be in mental health crisis. A human who violates the law could potentially be held accountable through the courts or administrative investigations. A robot can kill with impunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, colleagues?
Quickly, to staff. Number one, thank you for the presentation. I feel like I've heard some disconnect between your presentation and public comment. Are there any robots involved here that could do shootings as part of this ordinance?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have other policy concerns that we might discuss on second reading, but I appreciate the presentation, and I have no more questions.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Catherine and Brian, for being here. It was a really good presentation. I appreciated you making the case on how getting this information could actually de-escalate the crime. And I noticed that Gresham must be using these. Is that why there was Gresham examples?
We have utilized Gresham to help us out on a small number of times.
That's what happens when we get into the numbers past a certain, like 150 to 200 and some. There's a blend, right? Okay. There was a slide that said prohibited uses, and I'm sure you spent a lot of time coming up with that, what those prohibited uses are. Tell me how you'll monitor that, what the consequences would be if someone actually uses in the list that's prohibited.
So a lot of the things that we ran into even on our privacy impact assessment and the things that you're talking about here, unlike a lot of bureaus, that's already baked into our cake. I mean, we have ways that we handle evidence. We have supervision on the street. And in this particular case, you are looking at the people who are running this thing. We don't have a giant crew. We're doing, trying to do a lot and still doing our regular jobs. There won't be one of these calls that doesn't include me or Brian, and I work for Chief Nakamura, who's also here, and Commander Jovic. We will be super transparent. It's going to be on our website. It's going to be available to whoever has any questions. And honestly, anybody that wants to call me, I'm happy to talk to them about this because it's been something we've been living for years.
I appreciate the transparency and making this relational. Thanks.
Great. And we heard that this will, from public testimony, that this could potentially be used for crowd management. Explain why that is not the case with this particular ordinance.
Well, we're specifically restricted by Oregon state law on that, and we're bound to follow. I swore to follow Oregon state law, just like Brian did. Additionally, any of these things that we have, none of these cameras are new. Portland Police officers had handheld FLIRs in like 2006. I have a cellphone that has a really good camera, and I'll tell you, there's been times where I've put my cellphone on a stick and put it over a fence because I needed to know what was on the other side. Really, all we're trying to do is see the other side without me having to put my head over the top. All those things, this city wouldn't tolerate it. If there is a UAS over a group, there will be no question that we would be questioned whether or not it was ours.
Great. And we also, just FYI, we already have an aircraft in the sky for various law enforcement operations, and my understanding is this ordinance is actually far more restrictive in terms of how this technology can be used.
Significantly. And the footprint that we have is so much smaller. I mean, we work in a couple square blocks as opposed to airplanes which can run the city.
Great. And colleagues, this is one I've lived with for a while. I strongly support this ordinance, just FYI, and I will be voting in favor of it. It's going to save time. It's going to save money. It is a far more effective tool amongst many tools that we have around investigations. I thought you made some very compelling cases about life safety, but also just when it comes to traffic accidents and the like. We can get the traffic corridors moving again far more quickly with higher-quality information. So I think this is a very appropriate use of technology, and I would dare say we're a late adapter compared to other law enforcement agencies around us. And that's not your fault, but I'm glad to see that we're moving in this direction, and particularly as we talk about the cost of personnel and the difficulty of hiring people, et cetera, et cetera. It makes sense that we would adapt technologies that can help us out. This is certainly one.
Colleagues, anything further? This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you for being here, and thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
We'll move next to item number 240, please.
Change Police Accountability Commission deadline to August 31, 2023.
I'm pleased to bring this item on behalf of the Community Safety Division to extend the deadline for the Police Accountability Commission to complete their recommendation. Colleagues, this is something we've heard about in testimony in the last couple of sessions. With us today to present this item is Samir Canal. Welcome, Samir. It's good to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Samir Canal. I am the Advisory Boards and Commissions Manager for the Community Safety Division. We do have a slide deck today. So this resolution would change the Police Accountability Commission's deadline to August 31, 2023. We want to express appreciation to all five members of council, as well as to council staff, for your work on this document, and this resolution continues the collaboration of all five council offices in support of the Police Accountability Commission and its work. The presentation today includes two parts. The first with context on the Police Accountability Commission and its work, and the second part on the resolution itself and the timeline adjustment. Should take about six or seven minutes. Next slide, please. First, a clarification for members of the public who may be listening along. The Police Accountability Commission is itself not the Oversight Board. It is a rule-making body that is coming up with recommendations for city council on how to set up that Oversight Board. That is a large task in and of itself to essentially implement the voter's choice in November 2020 to adopt ballot measure 26217. And in the process of finding out how to craft recommendations, the PAC split its work into six phases. Have two slides on this. This is the short version. There are six phases: one on self-organization, one on fact-finding, one on powers and duties, also known as the functions of the new system, one on structure and details, the form that the new system will take. The fifth is on the transition plan: how do we get from here to there, as well as how it sits in the broader system of community input into police and policing. Finally, the concluding phase, which is taking conceptual agreements and with the help of legal counsel, converting them into legal text, as well as writing a report, taking community input, adjusting as needed, and finally recommending to city council. Next slide, please. So those first two phases, this is the longer version. The first two phases went through to October at a previous report, quarterly report given to city council. Co-chairs of the commission discussed one item in particular, the Barriers to Police Accountability Document, which is the problem statement that the PAC's work aims to address. The PAC also chose to add to that a list of best practices in police accountability in Portland today, which recognizes that there are plenty of parts of the new system that are doing well and worth keeping. From October to February, October 2022 to February 2023, the PAC developed the functions of the new system, and we'll be updating on that in the next quarterly report. That includes officer accountability processes when a complaint against an officer for alleged misconduct is made, structural oversight, which includes recommendations to change police policy or directives, which would go to the police chief as well as the city council, as well as how the new system will access information. The PAC is currently working on the form of the new system, structure and details, which includes how the membership is set up, its appointment processes, term lengths, things like that, oversight staff, which will report through a director to the Oversight Board, and reporting and transparency, which will ensure that members of city council as well as the public are informed and aware of what the new system is doing. Next slide, please. Together, those two, I went a little too fast. Together, those two are the destination that the PAC will reach, what the new system will look like. And following that, there'll be a discussion of the transition plan and how we get from here to there. Alongside all of that is the community engagement work that ensures that this process centers community input and values it. This is a large scope of work, and as if to highlight the frequency of the meetings, we actually are holding a community engagement event starting in 33 minutes at Concourse Coffee. So if anyone is interested in coming to that community forum, that is in person from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. today. There'll be another community engagement event on April 8. Members of the public can also give input at public meetings. Every meeting has an opportunity for public comment, and the calendar is on the slide, but it is also portland.gov/polic-accountability. You can go to Events and see that calendar as well. Next slide, please. And finally, if those events with fixed times don't work for a member of the public, there's also three other ways to provide input to the PAC throughout its process. This process cannot be successful without community input, so please do pick an option that works for you, anyone who's listening, to give your opinion on what the new system should look like. And you can see there's an online web forum, voicemail box, as well as postal mail. If you go to the website and go to Get Involved, all this information is there as well. So that's the first part of the presentation, contextualizing the PAC and where it's at in the process. Next slide, please. So this resolution would change the deadline of the PAC from where it is now, June 9, to August 31. The commission has been working very hard to complete its task. It has held 95 events to date. That's 84 public meetings, as well as some community engagement events and some community building work as well. Having the frequency of meetings can lead to two problems. When they're the full commission, it can lead to an overburdening of individual volunteers, which members have expressed in previous meetings at council. And one of the ways to solve that is to have more subcommittees or have more members, some of the members take on more work, which can reduce equity within the membership. Next slide, please. So the PAC requested more time on December 8 to allow for that, and requested to know as soon as possible to allow for effective project planning and community engagement work to achieve whatever the timeline decided by council would be. Next slide, please. This discussion included all the things we've discussed: the scope of the work, limitations of volunteer time, and the various different bodies of law to ensure that the recommendations that come to the city council comply not only with state law and the charter, but also with federal law, including the settlement agreement and collective bargaining and things like that as well. Next slide, please. There also, we discussed the benefits of holding briefings with experts and affected parties, including members of city council, as well as PBB leadership and the Portland Police Association, which have already briefed the council but may, or briefed the commission, but may also be beneficial to hear from a second time, as well as the council's mandate under resolutions 37527 and 37548 to have an inclusive, diverse, community-driven process and a lengthy involved process where consideration is given to the complex topic of police accountability. Next slide, please. So this resolution would ensure that the Police Accountability Commission does not need to hold three or more public meetings a week. That ensures that more time ensures that there's a process that can center community input and have opportunities for the PAC to hear more advice from experts and affected parties, complete the task of the city council, and most importantly, that the process of implementing the will of the voters in November 2020 can continue forward and succeed. I have two slides left here, just talking about next steps. Commissioner Gonzalez will be coming to the PAC in April. Will also be seeking to schedule a second briefing with all of the members of city council at public meetings in May and June. The upcoming quarterly report presentation in early May will include January to March 2023, which also focuses on the outcomes of the powers and duties phase, which again are access to information for the Oversight Board itself, officer accountability, how a complaint is addressed by the Oversight Board, and structural oversight, which addresses policy and directive recommendations made by the Oversight Board. And finally, the PAC is working to schedule time with the city council to receive specific feedback on the destination of the process, which is phases three and four together, the functions and form of the new system, in May. And last slide, please. And so just to kind of close this out, again, the PAC is working on the structure and details phase, including the Oversight Board membership, the Oversight Staff, and reporting and transparency, which is the other part of access to information, how the city council and the public gets access to information about the Oversight System. And again, if you are available, anyone listening, Concourse Coffee today from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. is our next community engagement event. Our next one after that is April 8, and we are working to schedule more with a couple different business groups, as well as various community groups over the course of the next month and a half or so. So that concludes the presentation, and again, just like to say thank you for the support from all five council offices.
Great. Thank you. And I just want to start by thanking you for working with the commission on the extension of the deadline. We heard from commission members that they were meeting three times a week as volunteers. That is onerous, and I appreciate the flexibility that you've provided here. And I assume that you've spoken to the administrators of that committee, and they believe the new deadline that you've established is sufficient. Is that correct?
Yes. So co-chairs of the commission have been involved in the conversation. Some of them were going to be here or may still be, I think, with the calendar today to support, but also that the idea is that it wouldn't need to get more frequent than it currently is if it is on August 31.
Great. That's really good news. So thank you for that compromise and working that out. Any further questions on this?
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask some questions after hearing public testimony.
Public testimony?
Oh, we have four individuals signed up. First is Tim Pitts.
Hi, Tim.
They were going to join us virtually, and it doesn't look like they're on the call. Next is Catherine McDowell.
Hi, Catherine.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, it's been a long, long morning and into the afternoon, hasn't it?
So good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council. My name is Catherine McDowell. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm one of the current co-chairs of the Police Accountability Commission. I sit on the commission as a representative of the small business community in Portland, downtown Portland. I'm here to again ask you for your support on changing the PAC's timeline. The resolution before you changes the end date for the commission's work from June 9 to August 31. While this resolution falls a couple months short of our request to align the PAC's timeline with the timeline in the city's settlement agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice, the extension is nonetheless very helpful. The additional time the resolution provides should allow the PAC to complete all phases of its work plan, obtain feedback from the council, key stakeholders, and community members on our draft recommendations, and submit our final
to get more frequent than it currently is if it is on August 31st.
Great, that's really good news. So thank you for that compromise and working that out. Any further questions on this?
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask some questions after hearing the public testimony.
Public testimony?
Oh, we have four individuals signed up. First is Tim Pitts.
Hi, Tim.
They were going to join us virtually, and it doesn't look like they're on the call. Next is Catherine McDowell.
Hi, Catherine.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, it's been a long, long morning and into the afternoon, hasn't it?
So, good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council. My name is Catherine McDowell. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm one of the current co-chairs of the Police Accountability Commission. I sit on the commission as a representative of the small business community in Portland, downtown Portland. I'm here to again ask you for your support on changing the PAC's timeline. The resolution before you changes the end date for the commission's work from June 9th to August 31st. While this resolution falls a couple months short of our request to align the PAC's timeline with the timeline in the city's settlement agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice, the extension is nonetheless very helpful. The additional time the resolution provides should allow the PAC to complete all phases of its work plan, obtain feedback from the council, key stakeholders, and community members on our draft recommendations, and submit our final recommendations to the council in a timely manner. With passage of this resolution, we will be able to complete these tasks without increasing the number of our weekly meetings PAC members must attend or shortcutting the PAC's equitable, community-based processes. The resolution notes that the PAC has met diligently and frequently, and I'm grateful for this recognition of the incredible commitment of our volunteer members and staff. But most importantly, this resolution notes that all city council offices support the PAC's mission, our efforts to date, and the importance of our work being successful. On behalf of everyone on the PAC, I want to thank the council for this statement of support. Together, with the passage of this resolution, we can build a new civilian police oversight board that serves all members of the Portland community, enhances public safety, and can be a model for the rest of the country. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and I'll just express the same gratitude to you and your co-chair and the other members of the commission for working well to make this compromise happen.
And thanks, thanks to you and to all members of the council.
Well, you're the one who gets the thanks. You're the one doing the hard work. You're not getting paid very much for it either.
Well, you're very welcome. It's important, and we're all committed to that effort.
Definitely, thank you.
Next is Casey Lewis. They were going to join virtually. They're not on the call. And we, our final testifier is Mark Porus.
Mark, welcome back.
Yeah, thanks. Good afternoon again, mayor and commissioners. For the record, my name's Mark Porus. I use he/him pronouns, and I am with the group Portland Cop Watch. We recognize that the city is now saying the Police Accountability Commission has until August 31, 2023, to complete its work. We appreciate that you listened to PAC members and community folks who asked for the commission to have enough time to do a thorough job. The settlement agreement that was signed by Judge Simon on April 29th, 2022, gave the commission 18 months from that date to finish its work. And it also said that the city could ask for an extension with the approval of the DOJ. We would like to hear assurance from council that you agree extending the deadline again, anywhere up to and including the October 29 date, should that be necessary, would not require DOJ approval. This ordinance states, among other things, that whereas the Police Accountability Commission requested by consensus on December 8, 2022, that the commission be granted more time by city council to finish its work, and it links to the Police Accountability Commission's 2022 Q4 report, which contains these words. "The Police Accountability Commission has by consensus formally requested that the Portland City Council allow the PAC to continue its work through October 29, 2023." Last week, when Tim Pitts and Cherie Smith were appointed to the Police Accountability Commission, you heard testimony from three other members of the PAC. Co-chair McDowell specifically asked last week for the October 29, 2023 deadline. Commissioners Lewis and Iona, who followed, each cut off their statements early because the mayor made it clear that an extension was in the works. We at Portland Cop Watch made sure that our comments got on the public record, specifying October 29th of this year, which is the deadline city council previously agreed to in the DOJ versus City of Portland settlement agreement as the deadline for the PAC to complete their work. It is a great relief that the PAC won't need to meet three times a week to try to meet the June 9 deadline. Would you please confirm for us that city council can set the deadline to October 29th of this year on its own without involving the DOJ? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure what the answer to that question is. Do you know?
City attorneys have advised us that the answer to that question is yes. Not an attorney myself, but that's what we've been told by the city attorney's office.
Good, thanks. Colleagues, any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Maps, you thought you might have some questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, good. This is the resolution. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Thank you so much. You're here a lot, and that means you're working a lot. Thank you, Catherine, same to you. It's really easy to vote aye on this. We, you made the case several times. We listened. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. Now we're going to a second reading, item number 242, please.
Deny Blaine A. West and Teresa West's application for special assessment of open space land at 10615 Southwest 42nd Avenue.
And I'm looking to legal counsel. Do I need a motion on this, given that it's a land use issue?
You need to adopt the, you didn't need to.
Okay, hang on. I probably have some very specific language here.
It's the one we had a meeting last.
No, I actually don't.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, please repeat that.
You need to move to adopt.
So moved.
Commissioner Maps moves to adopt the ordinance to deny the request. And can I get a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I was not here for the first reading of this. I've reviewed the record, and I concur with my colleagues. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted, meaning the motion was denied. Clear as mud. Anything else, legal counsel, we need to do on that particular item? Good, thank you. We will then go to the next second reading, item number 244.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maps.
Have we read 238? I see Director Taylor has been very patiently waiting all day.
You're correct. You are absolutely correct, and I apologize for that. Bico, sorry. I owe you a beer. Item number 238, a report.
Accept bid of $3,523,888 from Brown Contracting, Inc. for the Central East Side Access and Circulation Improvements Rebid Project.
And Director Taylor, I apologize. We had two commissioners leaving at different times, and we had a variety of items on the agenda that required us to have quorums. And so we've been skipping around, and I inadvertently moved beyond this, and I apologize. Your time is valuable, and you should not have been waiting that long. And I'll try to do better by you in the future. Sorry about that. Thank you, Commissioner Maps. So this project will install a new traffic signal within the central east side to improve freight access and circulation and reduce multimodal conflict. If you weren't following what that means, the good news is Bico is here to save us all. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, city council. For the record, I'm Bico Taylor, the Chief Procurement Officer. On February 16th, 2022, city council approved ordinance 190706 for this project. A total design and construction budget was set at $5.6 million. However, the project construction portion of that budget is $3.5 million. Procurement Services issued an invitation to bid on November 3rd, 2022, with a due date of December 13th, 2022. And in total, we received four bids. Brown Contracting was the low bidder and is the recommended awardee. Their bid came in at $3.52 million, which is 1% above the construction estimate. The Bureau decided to award the base bid amount and not add multiple alternatives, namely alternatives one and two. The city's standard 20% aspirational goal applies to the solicitation, and the following is a breakdown of utilization that Brown Contracting submitted. 43% of the project will be self-performed by Brown. 20% will be performed by certified co-bid subcontractors, and 37% will be performed by non-certified subcontractors. There is a list of co-bid subcontractors. Nothing here of record to point out. We do have a few Native American and African Americans represented in the subcontractor breakdown that made up the 20% co-bid subcontract. In reference to past performance, Brown Contracting is located in Eugene and is not a state co-bid contractor. They have a current City of Portland business tax registration and are in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. Costs for this project were allocated in PBOT's capital budget fiscal year 2022. And that was a part of a five-year forecasted budget that would include future projects like this one. If there are any questions about the procurement process, I'm happy to answer them now. And if you have any questions about the project, PBOT project manager Gabe Graff should be online or in attendance as well.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions at this particular juncture? Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is a report. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Maps, a second from Commissioner Ryan. Thanks, Bico.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Maps.
I want to thank the mayor and Director Taylor for pushing this important transportation safety project forward. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The report is accepted. Next is a second reading. This is 244.
Approve the designation of six trees as City of Portland Heritage Trees and remove the heritage tree designation from seven trees.
Colleagues, we heard a report on this previously. We've had public testimony. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Nick. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank everybody for their presentation on this last week. It was informative. I vote aye. The report, excuse me, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, item number 245.
Hello, thanks for having me today. Oh, sorry.
I have to read the title. "Authorized Competitive Solicitation and Execution of Price Agreements for On-Call Stormwater Improvement Services to Support the Bureau of Environmental Services' Private Property retrofit program for $3 million over five years."
Commissioner Maps.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services. With this ordinance, Environmental Services seeks this council's authorization for procurement services to issue a competitive solicitation and up to three price agreements for stormwater on-call services. Now, these on-call services will support Environmental Services' Private Property retrofit program. That program helps homeowners install small-scale stormwater management infrastructure like rain gardens, drywells, and pervious pavers. The purpose of this infrastructure is to keep stormwater out of our sewer pipes. Doing that reduced the risk of sewer system failures and sewer backups into Portlanders' basements. Small-scale stormwater management systems are cost-effective alternatives to large-scale capital improvement projects that increase the capacity of our stormwater management system. The Private Property retrofit program was established in 2010. Since its founding, the program has implemented more than 500 stormwater retrofit projects. This project, or this program, is expected to cost $3 million, which will be spent over five years. And here today, with a brief presentation, we have Danny Capsh, Private Property retrofit program supervisor with Environmental Services. Welcome, Danny.
Thanks so much for having me here. Sorry about jumping the gun there, everyone.
Oh, no, you're doing great.
Okay, well, thanks for having me. As Commissioner Maps mentioned, my name is Danny Capsh. I'm with the Private Property retrofit program with the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance is to approve the solicitation for three new on-call stormwater improvement service contracts in support of the program. So the Private Property retrofit program has been implementing small-scale stormwater retrofit projects in partnership with private property since 2010. These projects provide critical support to Bureau sewer and stormwater improvement projects by reducing private stormwater inputs into the system. The Private Property retrofit program relies on three on-call stormwater improvement service contracts in order to construct these projects on private property. Current contracts are set to expire in September of 2023. A new solicitation is needed to replace these contracts in order to continue the Private Property retrofit program, support of capital improvement projects throughout the city. Most of the work to date has been in the city's east side combined sewer areas and are typically in support of sewer improvement projects where pipe capacity is at issue. Rain gardens, drywells, pervious pavers, and other stormwater controls constructed on private property serve to manage private stormwater inputs on the subject property, soaking that water into the ground rather than discharging to the public sewer. This work helps eliminate local sewer capacity problems and basement sewer backup risk and can allow for less intrusive, more cost-effective alternatives to capital sewer improvement and rehabilitation projects. The program was first implemented in 2010 as part of the Tabor to the River program and has proven to be critical in supporting capital improvement program sewer projects over the years. The program is now an integral part of CIP project planning efforts in the Bureau. Through last fiscal year, Private Property retrofit programs has constructed 562 projects controlling stormwater runoff from over 20.7 acres of private roof-and-paved areas and 47 project basins. Over the past three years, the program has averaged construction of 75 projects controlling 1.9 acres of private impervious area annually. We are currently active in our construction season seeking new partnerships in targeted areas. An example of how this program works is illustrated by a 2018 Private Property Target Area and LADS addition. This is a great example of how the Private Property retrofit program supports capital sewer improvement projects. The sewer needed rehabilitation due to degradation and age, but the challenge of the project was the location of the sewer lines. Specifically, that is located in a space-limited alleyway with other utilities that make replacement of the pipe difficult. You can see my cursor. This is the alleyway right here. And these are some of the homes that could potentially be impacted with basement sewer backup risk. So in order to reduce the neighborhood impact and the overall cost of rehabilitating this line, BES decided to install a cured-and-placed liner. The cured-and-placed liner reduces the invasiveness of the project since it eliminates the need for open trench replacement of the pipe, but it comes at the cost of reducing the capacity of the line. Given that, the stormwater, private stormwater retrofit projects were needed in order to ensure the solution did not result in basement sewer backup risk to several homes along the line. The Private Property retrofit program[1581.16] The Private Property Retrofit Program partnered with twenty out of forty-seven properties along this line to control over thirty thousand square feet of roof and paved areas and eliminating basement sewer backup risks associated with the project as a result, and it also allowed for less intrusive, more cost-effective solution. One other benefit is the program also engages the community to be part of the solution. Letters are sent out to target properties, inviting them to partner with the city. A site assessment of interested sites determines if there is both a reason and an opportunity to partner on the stormwater retrofit project. Upon completion, participating property owners agree to keep and maintain any stormwater improvements made to the site through an operations and maintenance agreement recorded on the title and deed of the property. This model for stormwater controls benefits the city by reducing long-term maintenance obligations that might be necessary for alternative solutions, such as city-owned and maintained Green Street facilities, and instead relies on our community to participate. We have found that there is a greater understanding of sewer infrastructure in areas where the program has been implemented, as well as connecting the community through signage installed at each rain garden. The nature of the work that will be completed under the on-call stormwater contracts are small in nature but requires specialized skill in working on active residential and commercial sites. This solicitation is to obtain qualified contractors that can implement small-scale landscape-level work. City project managers rely on close interpersonal relationships with contract crews to ensure projects are delivered in an efficient manner with limited staff oversight. Because of this, it's the perfect opportunity to promote small-scale landscape and construction companies to implement city contracted work. In addition, it is an opportunity for workforce development, providing a chance for new contractors to expand their portfolios with knowledge and skills around green infrastructure and safe and effective stormwater management. As such, we have been working with the Office of Management and Finance's inclusive contracting team in development of this solicitation. The inclusive contracting team has assisted with reaching appropriate community groups and organizations such as Latino Built to help garner interest in the program and support minority and women-owned businesses in applying for this solicitation. Language has been a barrier to some qualified firms in past solicitations. Accordingly, this solicitation will be released in both English and Spanish. And then finally, this legislation authorizes the competitive solicitation of three time and materials price agreements with a cumulative total expenditure of up to three million dollars over five years, starting in fiscal year twenty-four. Each contract will have an annual budget of up to two hundred thousand dollars, allowing for variations in workflow and increased cost of implementation due to inflation, supply chain issues, or other unforeseen circumstances. Funds for this work come out of the Private Property Retrofit Program annually adopted budget. Really appreciate your time and allowing me the opportunity to explain our program a little bit, and absolutely happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Maps?
Danny, thank you so much for the presentation. Real quickly, is this the first time B E S. Has issued an R F P. In Spanish? Do you know that, the answer to that?
I believe it might be the first time that the city has done it. That was my impression from the buyer I'm working with 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 procurement, so that's my understanding.
Great. Danny, I'll tell you, that's my understanding, too. I just asked that question to highlight it for my colleagues on council. I believe this is the first time we've issued an R F P. In Spanish. Great innovation. I want to applaud everyone who made it happen, and I think the fact that we can do it here illustrates that it might be possible to do it, and some of the R F Ps. Or other bureaus are moving forward. We're not going to do a vote on this today, but I do want to just pause and take a moment to thank Danny for his presentation, and I also want to thank Danny for his patience. I know you have been on the line since at least nine-thirty this morning, and it's been a long day with the sun out, so thank you for your service for our city and our bureau.
I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Do we have public testimony?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading, and we are adjourned.